You ready? Okay. Welcome to Northwest Local School District. This is our work session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Liker, can you take roll call, please? Here? Here? Here?
Here.
Okay. This takes us to 3.1 Strategic Plan and Portrait of a Graduate update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gilbert. I would like the audience to know that anyone who is presenting tonight, in order to help those that might be hearing impaired or need to see our lips, and in order to allow us to better speak to you because we're presenting a lot of good information, we will take our mask off and have the shield on, and when we are not speaking, our mask will go back on. Please notice that we are social distanced, so even with our mask off, the shields are providing protection for us. I would like to remind the audience that this is a work session. We could have anywhere from one to two to three of these per year. As a reminder to our general public, it is our board policy that any time that we do not take action during a board meeting, there are no public comment section. That is our policy, so there is no place for public comment tonight. But I also would like to invite anyone who watches tonight, because there will be a lot of great information provided, that all you have to do is send an email into myself or Amy Wells, our treasurer, and we will gladly get a response out to you. And please remember, if you send it in, it is a public record, so you can at any time show that you've sent that question in, and we will get a response out to you. So please, if you have any questions about anything that we talk about tonight or present, make sure that you send in questions. Please also be aware that this is being taped by Waycross, so anybody can go back at any time and watch this over and over and over. It will also be available on our website, and so please make sure that if you miss a part, or if you want to rehear something, or if one of your friends were not able to be available at 5:30 because they're at work, or at a kid's basketball game, or a girl scout or a boy scout meeting, that they have an opportunity to watch it again at some other time. So want to make sure that you know that we're trying to be very transparent, and that we're trying to make sure you get good communication out to you as a district. So with that being said, we are going to go through the five pillars of our strategic plan tonight. Our strategic plan was created by our stakeholders about a year and a half ago. It was input gathered from community members, parents, staff members, and it was something that took a lot of work and time, that took place by putting evenings together, gathering input, putting it all together in a format that identified five pillars that were very important to our district being successful, and most importantly, our most valuable commodity, our students. So what we're going to do is break it down into the five pillars, and the first thing we're going to start with today is discussing what are those five pillars. One of them is student achievement. The second one is social-emotional development. The third one is diversity and equity. The fourth one is financial stability. And the fifth one is culture of trust. And so with that being said, I'd like to introduce to you Brenda Miller, our Director of Curriculum, and she is going to cover student achievement for us. So Brenda, floor is yours.
Do I need to turn on this microphone?
Yes.
It's on. Okay, great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you again this evening about student achievement and that particular goal area of our strategic plan. I know I presented to you last in Mar- or in January, I think, or November of 2019, and at that time, you actually heard from, most of you heard from, members of our district literacy leadership team about the work that they're doing to revamp professional learning in the district. So tonight, I just want to quickly review for you our goal and objectives, and then provide you with some updates, as well as talk about next steps in this particular area. Just as a reminder, our strategic plan says under student achievement that our goal is to empower students to achieve success and exceed their ambitious expectations. Pay attention to those key words, because we'll pull those out here in just a minute. We have three objectives under our particular area. The first is that we want to create learning experiences that are rigorous and that are engaging for all of our students. Secondly, we want to raise academic achievement through our relentless focus on literacy across all subject areas. And third, we want to facilitate student ownership of learning through personalized and differentiated instruction. So kind of to summarize that goal and those objectives, here's how we see it as a curriculum team. We believe that when we do these things, when we empower students, when we provide deeper learning experiences, when we get rigor right for our students, when we engage them in the learning process by focusing on literacy and then building student ownership of learning, and finally, when we make those learning opportunities and experiences differentiated and personalized so that they meet our students where they are at, that's how we believe we will raise student achievement in this district. And that's the plan, the strategic plan, and the student achievement part of that plan that all of our stakeholders put together, as Mr. Bolling said about a year and a half I shared this quote with you the last time we were together and talking about student achievement, but it's one that really resonates with my team. So we believe that every student in this district deserves a chance, or deserves to have a great teacher, not by chance, but by design. And that quote comes from a book Visible Learning by John Hattie. He's somebody who is looking at all of the research in education and kind of summarizing those key factors in the classroom, outside of the classroom, that have the greatest impact on student learning. So with this quote, I think the reason that I share it again is that we know we have some exceptional teachers in this district. But we also know from research that teacher quality is the most important and critical factor in terms of student learning in the classroom. And so we need to make sure that every student in this district has the opportunity to have a great teacher each year that they're with us, and that it isn't just hit or miss from year to year, because that's how we create and widen gaps for students. The other clear implication of this finding around the teacher's impact on student learning is that we need to build and expand upon teacher quality. And so again, I'm not saying that we don't have quality teachers, but I'm saying that we need to make sure as a system that that's the rule for all students who go through our schools. This particular graphic is from some research by Joyce and Showers in 1982, right? That's four decades ago, but it's been replicated over and over again. And the reason I share it with you is it's because it's driving what we're doing as a student achievement team. We believe that we need to revamp professional learning for our teachers, and we've taken some steps in the last year and a half to really try and do that. But we also know that we have to provide support for our teachers. As we raise expectations, we have to couple that with support. Otherwise, we won't have success. So in addition to modeling new strategies and providing opportunities for practice, we also need that last piece, that coaching feedback and those peer visits, in order to make sure that we are transferring what they're learning into their practice in the classroom. And so that's why I shared this particular slide with you today. As I said, this research has been replicated again and again through the course of the past four decades, and consistently finds that just talking to people about things doesn't result in a change in practice. But when you follow that up with job embedded coaching and support, and you continually revisit these things, that's how you change what happens in the classroom, and that's how you raise student achievement, by making sure that that's happening consistently in You saw a lot of this, if you were with us when we presented last time, but we have made significant changes to our professional learning model for teachers. So you heard directly from members of our district literacy leadership team the last time that we were together to talk about student achievement with the board, but some of the things we learned by asking our teachers in 2018, 19, we asked them questions about, how do you feel about professional learning? How's it going for you? Is it useful? Are you using it in your classroom? And our teachers told us quite honestly, it's not working. They told us it was disjointed, we were bouncing from topic to topic. They told us that it wasn't engaging, and not necessarily giving them tools they needed to use tomorrow in their classroom. And they also told us that they really wanted to hear from their peers. They wanted to hear from other teachers who were doing the work with students like ours every day, rather than outside experts coming in and talking theory. That wasn't working for them. So on our initial surveys prior to the 1819 school year, our average ratings were between five and six out of 10. Okay, so we've been collecting data on those same items for the last year and a half after every professional literacy day, to make sure that we know and get feedback from our teachers, both quantitative numbers and qualitative their comments, so we can continue to revise and revamp our model. I'm not saying that it's perfect, but we've done a lot of things that we are getting really positive feedback around from our teachers. So we've kept that common focus. We've focused on literacy in all of our district professional learning days. We've tried to customize that by grouping math teachers together and talking about literacy in the math classroom, or the science classroom, or what does that look like in the visual arts areas, but we still have kept that consistent thread. Our professional learning's been driven by our needs assessment. You say, what does that mean? So when we started the district literacy team, they went out and visited classrooms and shadowed students to see what the experience of our kids was like. In fact, we as district office administrators also spent a day shadowing students to give us insight into what's really happening in the classroom for students at all levels. We've made our professional learning led primarily by our teachers. We've really focused on making sure that we have tools and strategies in our sessions that teachers can use in their classrooms right away, and in fact, we ask them about that in every survey. We've really tried to also introduce choice in the professional learning. So this year, our six to 12 teachers have the opportunity to pick either two-day or four-day sessions that they want to engage in, that they feel are most relevant to what they need to learn. We also offered in August, despite the pandemic, we offered a two-day conference, professional conference for our teachers that was led by our teachers, and man, was it high quality. Our teachers, we have some wonderful people that have a lot to share, and many of those people that shared were people that are part of the district literacy leadership team, but also people who really excelled with instructional technology tools in the spring and had things to share for our teachers coming into the school year. We have still those opportunities we talked about for learning on your own, so we have a level-up badging system where teachers can earn badges and points. We also put out as a department the Tuesday Teaching tidbits each week where we share best practices and instructional ideas, and we also revisit some of these strategies that we want to make sure stay fresh and in front of mind for people. And then finally, I said this, but we're constantly looking for feedback from our teachers. How are we doing? I said we collect feedback. Obviously, it's no good if we don't do something with it. So this is actually from January 15th of this year. This is data from a question we ask every time around, are the literacy strategies that you learned about going to be implemented in your classroom? We were pleased that we had more responses from our teachers in January than we've ever had across the year and a half that we've been tracking this. Our average ratings from the elementary teachers were 8.9 out of 10, remembering that we started between five and six. Eighty-seven percent of our elementary teachers assigned a rating of eight, nine, or 10 on this question, and across the other questions as well. The secondary teachers had a little different model. It was very much about choosing what they wanted to learn. Their average rating was 8.6 out of 10, the 79% giving us an eight, nine, or 10. That graphic is just from the secondary group, because we actually had separate surveys for the elementary and secondary folks. Same questions, but sent to them in a different format. The literacy leadership team is really proud of the work they've done to create a literacy library, a strategy library. In fact, they want to expand this to math next year. They want to continue to add in elements of some of our other strategic goals around diversity and equity and social-emotional learning. But this library, we created a Google site that they actually build out each of the strategies that we've taught over the course of the last year and a half. And in that, they provide directions for that strategy in case somebody's forgotten or comes in new. They provide them with guidance on when is the best time to use this strategy and for what purpose. And then what I like best is they actually put in examples of them using the strategy with our students. So some are videos, some are work samples, and this is something that is a living, breathing library that anybody can add to over time. Here's an example of a literacy strategy, if you're wondering what I'm talking about. This is one of the ones we learned early on. It's called "What's Going On in This Picture." We know that photographs and pictures can really evoke thinking in our students, and we know that to become strong writers, sometimes we first need to verbalize and talk through what it is we're thinking. This particular strategy, I'm not focused specifically on what our fifth-grade students wrote, but more that they were asked to look at the picture, what do you notice, and then basically support the conclusions that they draw, or the inferences that they drew, from the information in the picture as evidence. So a lot of times, a teacher will have students do this kind of thing first at the beginning of a unit or a lesson to hook them, or engage them in the learning to come, and then they will use this to have them work on and develop their writing. Writing is an area that we saw when we visited our classrooms that we need to continue to focus on and really build more writing experiences and opportunities into our classrooms. Switching to math, I've already said we're focusing on math, literacy strategies in math, but we're also really focusing on making a shift in math from just memorizing procedures and formulas to actually having that deeper level understanding, that conceptual understanding of math, oftentimes by having our students discover rules and patterns before they actually learn those formulas that they need to know, so that they actually make sense and they can apply them to real-world situations. So in our newest adoption, we looked at illustrative math, and that's the program we selected for our middle school and our Algebra I classes. And this particular program really has the following goals: to increase rigor and depth of understanding, to focus on getting students talking about math, to increase student engagement, and then to teach them to apply math concepts to the real world. And so we're implementing this program in those areas now, but we see this way of thinking and teaching math being something we want to shift both down into the elementary school and up into higher-level math as well. This is an example of a warm-up from illustrative math. It's called "Which One Doesn't Belong?" I invite you to look at the four pictures, A, B, C, and D, and just call out the one that you think doesn't belong.
What are we getting quiz for?
What do you think, Mark?
I said, what are we getting quiz for?
Let me tell you this before I ask you for an answer. There are no right or wrong answers in this type of an activity. It's that fact that you can justify why you chose what you did.
I would say B.
Why would you say B, Mark?
Because all the other figures have consistent numbers all the way around the shape.
Okay, excellent. Other thoughts?
I'm the same.
You would say B?
Right, for the same reasons.
Ask Pam. Pam?
Did you say B or D?
You said B.
B is a boy.
B is a boy.
I might say C, because all the others have a perimeter of eight, but C has a perimeter of four. Add up the sides.
I can't see it really well, but I would say D, because the other three have four sides.
Excellent, Pam. Would be a correct answer as well. So what we like about this is that it's a type of activity, just like the one that said "What's Going On in This Picture," that invites students into the learning. It's called a low-floor, high-ceiling activity, because it allows all students to enter the conversation. You could have just said, "I pick A because it's green." That's not necessarily a math concept, but it tells me something as a teacher about where you're starting from.
Sure.
So it's a form of assessment that doesn't necessarily feel like a test. It's quick, less than five minutes are spent on this, and it can be something students have to justify either verbally with a partner, or put into writing, and it can go as far as you want it to go. Typically, these activities lead into the learning or discovery that the students will be doing that day, and so whatever, as soon as the teacher's starting to hear the types of comments and observations she's looking for, she would then start to jump off on that or he into the content that they want to teach. Looks different than the math I did when I was in school, for sure. I said earlier that we really feel it's important to support our teachers as we raise expectations and look for them to try new things and take risks. So we believe strongly in instructional coaching. We have coaches in place in several places, and we hope to continue to expand that as we look to make that professional learning job embedded and to make sure that it transfers and sticks. So we have district literacy coaches. Rachel Barnes and Sarah McMullin spoke to you. They are leading the district literacy leadership team and doing a fantastic job, but they also work directly with our teachers and coach them in the classroom. We have reading and math specialists at the elementary level. This year, they're doing some different things with the pandemic, but we hope to have them back in a position where they're coaching teachers, working directly with students who are struggling and needing intervention, and really helping us to move the needle with student achievement. We have instructional coaches at the middle school. We brought in instructional coaches in math at the middle schools and at the high school. Okay, this was done through that school quality improvement grant money that we received, so we're not paying for these things. Most of these things are not coming out of general fund at all. We just added a math coach at Colrain Elementary. They were identified as one of our focus schools way back when we actually had state test data and accountability in place, and they have been receiving support from a state support team consultant for the last three years. But we brought in a math coach to help them with thinking about and making the shift, and man, she's outstanding. She just started in January, and she's got the teachers thinking about and trying lots of new things consistent with the vision. And then finally, this year, we felt like it was really important to add instructional technology coaches at the elementary school. Again, these are paid for out of grant funds, but these coaches, actually, I think those are paid for maybe out of ESAR funds, which is federal money. But we, those coaches are there to help move our teachers forward with teaching in a virtual environment and using all of those resources and tools that we're providing to help teachers and support teachers with our strategic objectives. Speaking of resources, this is a list of some of the things that we've selected and purchased with input from our teachers to support our strategic objectives. So we know that formative assessment practices, that's instruction, or that's assessment in the moment, that's feedback for students, that helps guide what they do in the next day, rather than being something that's assessment from last year that we're trying to use to plan for tomorrow. We know that we've got to engage our students, and we know that we have to find ways to differentiate or meet students where they're at. So this particular image is from iXL Learning. It's a program we selected for our elementary students, and again, paid for out of grant funds, but this particular program allows for practice at all levels. Teachers can assign on-grade level, above-grade level, below-grade level, and it really tracks how students are doing in terms of mastering skills. It's fun, it has some prizes and awards and levels, but our kids have answered over 5 million questions this year alone. And while that number is a big number, and it sounds exciting, what's really as exciting is we know from research that if our kids answer an average of 30 questions per day, or per week, excuse me, that they see measurable gains in student achievement. So right now, all of our elementary schools are averaging closer to 60 questions per day, and students are using this at home as well as at school. This is a program that's available to our students 24/7, so it's also a resource to help support our parents outside of school in the summer and whatnot. I said we were monitoring. We're doing consistent walkthroughs around those focus areas, looking for evidence that there's transfer of those skills our teachers are learning in their practice. We actually start our walkthroughs for this year on Thursday, and even though it's been an unusual year with lots of changes, we still want to make sure that we're seeing literacy, that we're seeing engagement, that we're seeing teachers giving good feedback to students, and that we're seeing rigor. I just snipped some of these slides, but the two on the left are actually coming out of Colrain Elementary. They have participated in these walkthroughs since the very beginning and been very open to feedback. They are up to, as of last year, they were up to almost 73% of their classrooms where we saw in our 15-minute random time, we saw formative instructional practices. And over 92% of our classrooms at Colrain L last year, we saw students interacting with literacy and highly effective strategies. So those are positives. Rigor is an area we have to continue to work on, and we believe that the work we're going to do with Portrait of a Graduate and mapping out those 21st-century learning skills and our competencies will allow us to create more rigorous learning experiences for all students. Okay, where do we go next? So that whole left side is talking about Portrait of a Graduate. So you know about the four meetings, and you know about identifying the competencies, but out of that work comes a lot of work for the Student Achievement Committee. So we need to develop a learning design framework. We need to map out those competencies pre-K-12 to show how we're going to have those skills and competencies develop in our students across their time with us. We need to design deeper learning experiences that are consistent with those competencies and those 21st-century skills. And then finally, we need to have rubrics and assessments to monitor the development of those competencies. Our plan for next year, Jack and Joe at the two high schools plan to expand our College Credit Plus offerings in partnership with Cincinnati State and Sinclair Community College so that we have more to offer our students who want to work at that level. We're going to be developing a comprehensive literacy plan to kind of make sure that we have a clear, long-term vision for where we're going with literacy. We'll continue monitoring those things that are part of our strategic plan, looking for that transfer in the classroom. We will continue to work to improve professional learning by providing choice for teachers, by starting to integrate initiatives so that in addition to literacy, we look for ways to integrate the work we're doing and need to do around diversity, equity, and inclusivity. We're going to start a new journey next year with our K-3 teachers focused on the science of teaching read. Early literacy is critical. If we don't get it right early on, we're constantly chasing our tail, trying to catch up and close gaps. And our teachers and our building administrators have said, we need instruction on the best ways to teach students how to read. And so we'll begin that journey, again, funding that out of grant funds, but making sure that we provide teachers with the opportunity to both learn in three-hour segments, but also then apply with their learning in between our sessions. Continue our shift in math instruction, expanding that both down into the elementary and up to the high school higher-level courses, and then continuing to provide coaching support. Again, high expectations and high support is what we as a curriculum team are committed to provide for our teachers. And finally, we got to get results. It's been hard with not having some of the normal data we would look at right now to see if we're making a difference, but we, and then having a pandemic this year on top of things, but we believe that if we do all these great things and nothing changes, the needle doesn't move with student achievement, we've missed the mark. And so we want to be held accountable for making sure that student achievement improves across this district, but I also have to say that we have to think bigger than just our report card in our state tests, right? We need to be thinking about measures of student learning that are actionable, that are timely, that we can build upon. And so that's really where our focus is right now with our teachers. That was a lot. What questions or comments do you have regarding anything with our student achievement goal area?
Could you couple slides back to the prime rigor?
It's something that we need to continue to work to do together. We have not attacked that particular branch of our objective in the same way that we've attacked the others, but it's definitely something that we are going to be doing. And we need to, yes.
I guess a couple of observations that I see. So in the beginning, you said the buy-in was you're averaging, like I think you said, five or six out of 10, and it obviously is much higher, which the professional development opportunities, from what I can tell over the three years I've been engaged on the board, has grown quite a bit. Is there a subset of educators that have done education for so long that this is such a new... a new experience that the buy-in time's a little longer for them or, but with the results that you're showing us now, it sounds like there is a good buy-in, you know, we're getting scores and?
Yeah, so even when they're giving high ratings, many of our teachers are giving us qualitative responses and open-ended questions telling us how we can do better. And one of the things, Mark, they're really asking for is that we differentiate the learning for them so that a teacher who's already had lots of professional learning around the science of teaching reading isn't sitting through the same sessions over and over with a brand-new teacher. They're asking us to be looking for ways to do that through choice. So it's always a balancing act for us as a curriculum department because we have to make sure that everybody has a baseline of information, but we also need to be doing just what we're asking our teachers to do with students with our teachers. And so that's a goal that the literacy team has.
I guess the other thing is clearly the issue we're dealing with now is we have completely uprooted the way we've educated our kids, like it's just, it's not even resembling of what it was, you know, a year and a half ago. And I think everything you presented was amazing, like really hats off to you and not just for the presentation, but for, there are a lot of hours behind the scenes getting this going, I guess clearly you can see that. I guess somehow trying to infuse this in the middle of a pandemic is, it's quite a lift, I'm sure. Any thoughts, have there been any conversations about the modification of the direction, target that you're shooting for versus the pandemic? Because like, I get feedback from parents all the time about, they feel like the kids are in a in-person, virtual learning situation, and so now, we want the achievement scores and like you said, we want, we want the bang for our buck. But now we got kids that are like, from a behavioral perspective, like they're isolated, we're having mental illness concerns, which will impact your student achievement, like clearly. And so I guess what I put together is there's this quagmire of things that we have to try to work through and still develop your, our plan. Any thoughts around that?
Well, we, I mean, we had to pivot coming into this school year. We had to add professional learning days and we had to shift the focus to instructional technology, finding those people that really succeeded with engaging kids in the spring and getting them to present and share those ideas and resources with our, all of our teachers. We had to be able to respond in that way. We know we're going to have lots of things we need to address in the fall, but our same philosophy of making sure that teachers have support. So we've already started conversations about what does that look like in the fall when you have kids who haven't even had instruction because they haven't engaged in remote learning, not because their teachers didn't try like heck to engage them, but how do you take that as well as somebody who's done every assignment, watched every instructional video, participated, and has support at home, and how do you bring them all back together in the classroom? Not to mention the social, emotional, and behavioral things you're talking about. So the key there is that we keep listening to our teachers, that we keep looking for ways to provide support, and that is our mission. My team, our philosophy is customer service first, and we view our teachers as one of our biggest customers as a curriculum department. We believe we need to remove barriers wherever we can. That doesn't mean it makes it easy or that we have all the answers. We don't. But working together, listening, and providing that support is what we're trying to do.
You know, Brenda, what about other school districts that we're doing this and how we're teaching our kids? How are we comparing or have you compared like to other school districts around that are doing something different than us?
Certainly, I collaborate regularly and I have been since back in the spring with other districts, with other curriculum leaders. We share ideas, we plan together and talk about what's happening, but I think everybody has had to try to figure this out. The trick is that we're not always reinventing the wheel independently, that we're working together to figure out ways to do it. But people have definitely landed in different places if you're speaking of how instruction is being delivered during the pandemic. And we're constantly weighing, as Mr. Boeing has said, we're weighing safety versus student achievement and trying to make, get as close as we can to making sure we're achieving both of those goals. But safety has been, in this district, safety has been our top priority, and it's something where we're now trying to make sure we build back in those elements that we know are high-quality instruction so that we do get back to the business of school, which is making sure our students are learning.
Are you finding that the, I don't know, the curriculum or whatever, the kids are getting it more or they're taking a step back? Are they, you know, you know, do you have kids that were straight A students and now they're getting Cs or vice versa, or what are you finding or are you finding any results like that out?
So we know, we know from the data we do have, we know that we came back in lower than where we left, right? I think that was a given. We know that it was more substantial in math than it was in language arts from the spring coming back in the fall. You know, we're third grade, we have our third grade state test results. We had about 7% percentage point drop in where we scored in the fall, but we also know that we had 83 students that are remote that did not choose, their families did not want them to come in and take the assessment. So we don't know where those 83 students are at, at least on that measure. We know that we looked at our D's and F's after first quarter, we're looking at it again now after semester. We know that we have more D's and F's than we've had in the past. Have we seen students who were high achievers that are struggling with the independence and learning on their own? Absolutely. We're hearing that from our teachers, we're hearing that from our parents. So that is our charge, is to continue to work to figure that out.
What do you think the answer is for those kids that are struggling that were high achievers and now they're getting Cs, D's, F's, or what have you? What is the answer? Is the answer to go back to teaching the way it was? Or is there another method out there? Or what are you seeing, how are you going to get to me if I'm a straight A student and now I'm getting Cs and D's? What are you going to do for me to get me back to where I was or?
I think there's two parts of it, and I'll let Brenda address the academic side, but I've had a couple of conversations over the last couple of weeks where it's the social interaction that is affecting the kid more than anything. It's not being able to participate in band-type activities. It's after-school activities or clubs because everything's shut down. It's not being able to hang out with friends on the weekend and be socially interactive. And that's affecting their mental health, which again, is playing down upon their academic side. I think the biggest thing that that, that has to occur there is they have to actively reach out and try to, what's the word I'm looking for? Promote themselves, seek help for their academics, because our teachers are readily available through Zoom, readily available through our cohorts. You can, at either high school, you can send a note to a teacher, they'll stop by and see you during the day, but you have to, you have to speak up for yourself. So I don't know what the exact word.
Advocacy.
Advocacy, self-advocacy. And if you'll do that, and then we have counselors on the spot, we have social workers in the district, but that's very difficult because at that point, you're doing something that you've never had to do before. But our parents keep the lines of communication open with our kids and do that for the kids. And so I've directed a couple of parents to talk to our principals, and our principals have arranged that to happen, and the kids are starting to turn the corner for a couple of them. Academically, it's just advocating for yourself also. If you're struggling in a specific class because you're a better learner, when you can go five days a week and listen to, I mean, think about a parent. I'm not going to do very well teaching pre-calc. It's just not going to happen. I'm not going to do very well teaching geometry. So not having that person in front of you to teach that on a daily basis and to assign homework and to come back in, that's where you advocate for, hey, what are some resources where I can watch how this problem is being solved or to do that? That's what we can supply them, advocate for them and get them in their hands, and that's what we've got to do a better job of. The high schools are both trying, the Wednesdays where you go seven bells, go to your bell, get that teacher in front of you, and more and more teachers are zooming more and more, and that should get better as we move forward, but it's still a work in progress that continues to get better and better. I mean.
I would have said the same, Todd. I think we have to look at each situation with a student like you're describing, Jim, that we have to look at each situation and why they're struggling, right? And there's so many different reasons. Sometimes it is that they're depressed because they don't have the high school experience that they had anticipated or wanted to have, right? And so we have to look for ways to engage them and connect them. Sometimes it's truly because they are not independent learners. They need someone to give them a very structured.
They need to be in front of them, day in, day out, in front of them in the classroom.
Yep, and some kids, it's just they need a little bit more time to touch base with their teacher. So we're adding some things in. Heidi spoke about it our last meeting, adding in some night support for both parents and students where they can sign up for sessions to get help. Incredible response from our teachers who are willing to do that for our students and our families. Adding in some opportunities for after-school tutoring and support, adding in some summer programs. But again, it really comes down to getting to the root of why a student is struggling. And for many of our high-achieving students, it's the fact that they haven't had to learn on their own and be independent in the way that we're asking them to now. And so we have to find ways to build in scaffolds and supports to help them be more successful at navigating that, but the answer isn't to completely back off, right? Because think about what a college experience is like and what level of independence is required, right? So we have to be sure that we're preparing our students, whether they're planning to go to a four-year college or a community school or even out into the workplace for some of that personal responsibility that they're going to need to have to be successful.
Yeah, there was an interesting article in The Inquirer where suicides for teenagers in 2020 is the lowest it's been in a long time. And some of that, they attributed to kids not being in school and bullying not occurring and some other things. But if you also think of college and the setting you go into there, I mean, I went to what was considered a small school, Dayton, but I still sat in a class of a chemistry class of 180 kids. So if you didn't pay attention and take good notes, you kind of just got in this shuffle of papers and laws. So I think Portrait of a Graduate will also help identify those competencies where kids can self-learn, self-talk, self-advocate, and be able to get through things like this at a better level, starting at a younger age. And I think that's why those competencies are so important as we move into the 21st century. I think a lot of that happens in our Butler Tech schools, our Scarlet Oaks and our Diamond Oaks, where it's project-based learning and it's other things where they take it from the ground and work the way up. They work on the research of it, they work on the presentation of it, and then they actually present it through the verbal piece. And that's why they're having such success in those programs. So I think that's a lot of what we can take from that and do here too, but I think a lot of it depends on the individual kid. Some kids are really blossoming with this type of learning, and those kids are really going to be well-prepared when they get to college because a lot of these big schools, if you go to a UC or a Georgia, Florida, Alabama, Xavier, I mean, those are large classes and you can't get lost in the mix very easily. So it's a learning experience, but it's not for everyone. We're the first to admit that, and we just got to continue to look at each case individually and see what we can do to help them.
Do we think that, I mean, because I, isn't Cincinnati Public, aren't they going back to?
They're trying, but.
All-day learning or whenever it is?
February 1st, they're trying, yep.
And Oak Hills, and I'm just naming a few around that I've heard. Is that something that we're even looking at? Or are we looking at the safety part of the COVID problem?
Well, right now, we're trying, the Wednesdays and the Zoom meetings, the seven bells today to see if that works. And if we have success and we can get the vaccinations, because again, we are a district who stayed open consistently where the other districts have not. They've been shut weeks at a time, two weeks at a time. They all closed long before we did for weeks at a time because they couldn't keep staff. Right now, we're able to keep staff, we're able to keep a safe haven for our kids to come, and we've had very successful. At the end of the third quarter, if folks are vaccinated and things are going well, yeah, we could possibly look at something, but that's really difficult because we designated staff at the beginning of the year. You folks are for remote, you folks are for in-person. To just switch in the middle of it is almost impossible. So that makes it very difficult. To do it in Zoom though and meet during the day like we're doing on Wednesdays, that's a better possibility of what we can do.
Cincinnati Public's also looking at hybrid when they return, right?
Yes.
So two days a week for half of the student body and then two days.
And if you look, if they go open hybrid, I'll still be shocked because if you pull, I was pulling up The Inquirer looking for the suicide numbers that were on there. Right now, Cincinnati Public's getting fought tremendously by the parents to not return February 1st. And remember, there's a lot of pressure right now. You do not get the vaccinations unless you do return, so. And they're set to get vaccinations on the 28th, and we are still waiting to see when our turn is. So I'm still trying to figure out how that system determines when it's your turn, when we've been in-person since day one and they go before we do. I just don't get that.
So are we having meetings with the educators and the building leadership about, so let's say in-person isn't for another couple of months? Are we having these discussions about what that transition would look like if that were the case, or is the thought process more take this model and run the rest of the year out with it?
Right now, we're taking Wednesdays to see how they go with the Zoom lessons of rotating the seven bell schedule to see how that goes and evaluate to see if it's meeting the needs of what we need to do.
Because I can see what you're saying. If you have a teacher that's been doing X for.
We just don't have the staff to, and the governor is not helping us any. When he says everybody will get shots on the 1st and March 1st, everybody will be back in school, that's not reality. He can't even guarantee us the shots. They wasted 1,200 shots in Columbus because they didn't take care of them. That's 1,200 shots that somebody else could have had. He doesn't know what he's talking about. It's unfortunate to say. It's not reality. I don't look for us being completely vaccinated till the end of April. I mean, that would be the reality of when we get our second shot, then it's 10 days after that because we don't even know when our time is yet, right?
You were talking about all the students.
Students don't get vaccinated. It'll be the end of.
Just the staff, just the staff.
Just the staff. Students are not in line to get vaccination. There is no plan for students under sixth grade to get vaccinated at all this, during 2021.
Can I ask you a question, Brenda?
Sure, Joe.
Do we have, and this is a reality check, do we have good, good teachers in our district?
Absolutely.
Do we have bad teachers in the district?
We have teachers that need to.
Well, how do we reach the bad teachers then? If we, you know, this is a wonderful process. It's just, how do you deal with the older teacher who just says, I'm not buying this? How do you deal with people like that?
It's a combination of people working together to coach and provide feedback until the point at which you identify that that teacher is not willing to improve, and then you've got to make a choice about what's best for kids. And so that happens through the evaluation process, Joe, and that's where it needs to happen, where we've tried to support and coach. We always have to start there, but then we have to look at, you know, sometimes it's not getting fired because you're not causing harm, physical harm or breaking the law or anything like that, but maybe it's not a good fit. I certainly had experiences as a principal where teachers were wonderful people, cared about kids, but they weren't getting it done in the classroom, and I had to coach them to some other type of career. And it wasn't, it wasn't getting them fired, it was a decision that they came to based on feedback. So we have to keep holding people accountable, but again, doing so in a way that provides support until such time as we have to make that decision that this isn't working and we need to move this person on.
And it comes to evaluation, every year you'll see resignations. You've already seen some this year with the writings on the wall, and they've resigned at the end of the year, so they've handed in a resignation.
But you know how the system works.
I know how the system works.
I can see it in your face.
If we go back to the evaluations then, would you say that there are building administrators or assistant principals who deal with the evaluations, because that's what we had at Walnut, who had a motivation of being political? Like, I like that guy or I like that gal. So, you know, they'll walk in the classroom, and even though the majority of the faculty in that school think that this, this person, this individual is not good, because once again, I go back to Walnut Hills. We had teachers like that, but every year, they get a good to a very good evaluation. And the guys that are in the trenches, the guys and gals who are busting it every day are saying, why?
I can't argue with you, Joe. I mean, that's a reality we have to continue to work at.
So you agree that it could possibly be political in the evaluations?
We obviously try to use the rubrics that were given, but there is subjectivity with any rubric in terms of how it's applied. So we're working with administration, particularly with the new evaluation system coming out next year. We have 22 teacher, or 22 administrators going through a training on coaching and feedback. That's a four-session training to help improve the quality of feedback we give and the coaching we do with our teachers, but there are all sorts of complications that you're well aware of that do come into play when you're looking at improving teacher quality.
Thank you.
Anything else for Brenda?
Thank you for your time.
Brenda, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that's the number right across the hall. Okay, for anybody who's just gotten on Facebook currently or is just tuning in, our presenters are going. our presenters are going to wear shields, so it is more clear on what they are saying. They are socially distanced. And presenting now, we have Dustin Garing and Heidi Stickney. They will introduce themselves and tell you their current positions, and they will be discussing our second pillar, which is social and emotional learning.
Well, good evening, everyone. If we haven't met, I think I know everyone here, but online as well, I'm Dustin Garing. I am essentially the Assistant Director of Student Services, and this is Heidi Stickney.
Good evening, I'm Heidi Stickney. I am the Administrator for Special Education.
So together, we work together very well to create Student Services in our district. I handle most of or all of the regular education side of things, as well as most discipline processes. And Ms. Stickney handles all of our students with disabilities processes and all that good with that. It's quite a job, and she does a fantastic job of that. Together, we work with a team of folks that are working on the social-emotional learning aspect of our pillars. And for this, we have our goal statement. Our goal statement for this group is to empower individuals to identify social, emotional needs and safely navigate their environments. So to, for our, for those who are watching or working with our students to identify what's going on, and then also to help those students to navigate their environment. And we know those environments are changing constantly. That breaks down the three action steps that we're going to talk about today. I'll handle the first, and Ms. Stickney will handle the next two. For the first strategic objective, it says here that individuals will be knowledgeable of characteristics which may lead to identification of social-emotional needs. So essentially, what that is saying is that we're going to continue to gain our understanding of what to look for to help identify the social-emotional needs of our students. What that looks like in an action step is to provide training and resources, which allows individuals to identify needs and seek appropriate resources and strategies. At the district level, we want to make sure, and we have made sure, that the buildings receive ongoing professional development in the area, particularly of trauma-informed care, consultation, through consultations, as well as presentation. At the building level, they continue to measure current outcomes, and that the evidence will look like professional development activities, and also to establish a core trauma group, a group that can respond to scenarios or situations with kiddos. Our current status of those items, all buildings by the end of 2021, by the end of this school year, will have at least the baseline trauma training. Many have a deeper learning, as they've been doing this for a series of years, to help an understanding. Also, staff members are a part of a citywide trauma network for continual connection, so I'm a part of that group in particular, looking for more and more places to learn more and more. And I think it kind of goes back to a mantra that we have for Student Services when it comes to training itself, that we're going to have training to enhance empathy amongst staff and with a student-centered, trauma-informed lens to see their students and the restorative practices needed, to create an environment where relationships are treated as the most important resource well before there is a situation, and the programming needed to help a student navigate their environment and to grow the most. So by training our staff, we're ensuring that our kids are in the best position possible to grow the most, and that's what we want to do. And the type of training that we're doing is around that trauma-informed care, understanding the outcomes of trauma, the outcomes of ACEs and high ACE scores in our kiddos, and then also how to, how to respond in a restorative manner. So giving them the tools to respond and the eyes to see what's happening with our kids. In addition to that, our elementary school has piloted a TERRIS metrics, mental health screener, to all in-person, third, fourth, and fifth graders. They've done all the follow-up activities based on the results, and we're in the process of planning our spring assessment. So that is essentially what used to be a pencil, paper pencil, but now it's computer-based assessment, a series of questions to help identify risk factors in kids. Then they went to those students and talked to them about what's happening in their life, did some counselor action steps, it was a principal action step, connected with the parents, and then made plans for many of them for ongoing services. So this is the first time we've done anything like this. So it was very much a pilot. Our team did a fantastic job, and the outcome of that at each school was a group of kids that were not on the radar for services, but became on that radar and for continued conversation because of the manner in which they answered those questions. And so they were able to do that work with all in-person, third, fourth, and fifth. We're going to do that again in the spring. I gather from that team that they're interested in continuing that, so as we go forward, we'll continue to have that grow. The next piece there is all buildings K to 8 have a team of staff members that will participate, or they do participate, in monthly meetings with our behavior specialists. So in any building, you have kind of a frequent flyer, the students have the most referrals that are causing the most disruption, and they need to grow the most in those areas. So not only is the teacher working with them, but also at the administrative level, they're gathering as a group with our behavior specialist to say, "What plans do we need to put in place? What's happening with those plans? Does a kid need to continue to go higher in the tiers? Are they good where they are? Or has a kid grown in those skill areas?" So our behavior specialist, namely Melissa Nelson, does a fantastic job of that work, and all of our K8 buildings are doing that work with her. And so they have those meetings monthly, and they talk case by case around those. In addition to that, all of our buildings have an alternative learning placement program in place for both short-term and daily intervention. So you may have a situation where a kid just needs a 20-minute break. We have a place for that with activities and a person that's been trained to work with them. In other places, you might have a student that needs longer intervention. At the secondary level in particular, the kid may need it all day. What used to be, go sit in a room, silent, a very small room, silently and do all your work while someone's staring at you, now it goes to a place where people are working with you around what's happening and can help you with your work, as well as the skills that you need not to return to that place. And that is, that is K-12 that we have those things in place for our students. So this is the old-school ASA, in-school suspension, that's been revamped into a learning placement. The elementaries, and the middles, and the highs have those short-term opportunities, kind of burst of skill reset. Sometimes it's just that they need a mindpiece reset, a place to kind of burn a little bit of energy, or reset their focus, and we have those things in place for those kids. I'll turn things over to Heidi for a couple of the other objectives and action steps. You're up.
Thank you. I am so excited to be able to work with Dustin on so many of these opportunities and these objectives. We have worked diligently over the past couple of years on a lot of things together, and it's been a great partnership, so thank you for that. Our second strategic objective is that all stakeholders will have awareness and understanding of available resources and have a sense of empowerment to explore them. And so our action steps for that objective are to explore resources available for tiers one through five services and clearly communicate them with explicit training to respond. So at the district level, we're looking at identifying and partnering with resources and communicating with staff around universal tiered supports. We're establishing a district trauma response team. We are going to create common language and a script and a flow chart. And at the building level, we're looking for staff to have knowledge of and shared language for services. So the status of the activities related to this strategic objective are the establishment of the district crisis team. The district crisis team is in place and fully functional. In years past, we, you know, a text goes out, we have a process in place with the team members, and we respond, you know, to the, to that need in that building. We actually have not had the need for any kind of crisis intervention this year for that team, but we have, in the past, maybe done one or two runs in a school year. Our student support guidelines are established, and we revise those every year. We get input from parents and staff related to the tiers and the tiered services and the code of conduct. And within that document, we have established identification of activities and interventions that go on in each tier. We also have a process for referrals for services and how to access additional supports for families as well. We are also in the process of rebooting our PBIS program, our Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. We actually have a building who received state recognition at the bronze level for their implementation of PBIS, and that is Taylor Elementary. So we want to make sure to shout, give a shout-out to Lori Reilly and her team for fantastic implementation of services and getting that recognition. The third objective that we have under our social-emotional area is for individuals will have access to wraparound services to address social-emotional needs. And our action steps at the district level, we're analyzing our current services, we're finding new services, and at the building level, we are integrating protocols with the counselors and creating and implementing groups as needed. So the status with that is that, again, I mentioned just a minute ago, that we are actually revising our student support guidelines on an annual basis to make sure we have included our partnerships, whether that be with Children's Home, or Camelot, or Talbot House, or any of the Juvenile Court, for example, to make sure that we have included all of the services. And we are always looking for, you know, where are the gaps? What are we missing? What have we not included? We have a continuation of our relationship with Children's Home to include parent groups, as well as our Camelot Partial Hospitalization Program. Believe it or not, with our continued services with Children's Home, we are up to 20 staff, direct service staff and supervisors who are providing direct services to our kids. We started, I think, five years ago with one therapist in the whole district. Now we're up to 20 people supporting our families. And Children's Home takes both Medicaid and private insurance, and really has provided so many services to our children and families, and we're very grateful to them. We have continued an in-district program called Connections through Hamilton County Educational Services Center, and those students are receiving very intensive behavioral support, and that program services kindergarten through fifth grade. And so we're looking to them about how do we improve services and continue that, but they're getting intensive services through that program. We also have, through our Children's Home relationship, an in-district medication management service. So those kiddos who are hooked up with Children's Home therapy services, who may need a referral for a psychiatrist, or are positioned to follow them prescribe medications, we actually have a physician who comes on-site two times a month at this point, and will meet with the families here on campus, as opposed to them having to go downtown or go over to Children's Home to see the physician. In addition, we've added counselors at some of our larger buildings, and the counselors have really worked in developing our social-emotional learning curriculum from the K through eighth grade. And we also have continued our Parent Project Initiative. This is a program where we circle up families that have some needs and meet with them about six times, bring them in during non-COVID times, bring them in for dinner, the kids come, we have babysitting, and they work on different activities around parenting and needs of kids. So we have quite a bit going on with our social-emotional learning. Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got one. When you said five years ago you had one staff member, and you have 20 now, and you may have said this, and I must have missed it, how many kids are you guys affecting your 20 staff members? How many are you dealing with?
So each therapist probably has just about between 15 and 20 on their caseload.
Okay.
So they serve that many students on the one-on-one basis.
Gotcha. Did you say therapist?
Yes, of course.
There's case management services and therapy services both provided.
Melissa Nelson, what is her position? What is her...
Behavior specialist. She's a behavior specialist.
Great. And I love the Parent Project Initiative.
It's an amazing program.
I think one of the things that we've learned through COVID is I think parents really are starting to understand how much support the educational process is giving their children. And now some of it is going back to the parent's responsibility, and if, and if they don't have the skill set for that, but yet we can provide them an opportunity to try to educate them and say, "Hey, you know, here's, here's where we might be losing a kid in this area," or whatever. I mean, I think, I think that is as important as us educating the children.
So, you know, Lyndsey Gibson gets all the credit for this. She's the connecting dot on the parent project, so I want to make sure she got that recognition. This is a program that we work with that truly does bring parents together in a non-COVID space to talk about baseline parenting skills. They have found a way in a COVID space to still do parent mentoring, even at a one-on-one basis. And so these folks that come out, they mentor a parent, they work with problems, they're boots on the ground at this, during a COVID situation. So what you're speaking of is exactly right, where they'll go to the house, they'll talk to the parent, they'll talk to the kid, what's going on? What do we need to talk to them? Do we need to make a behavior contract? Do we need to do this? Do we need to do that? So they bring fresh eyes to a situation, and prior to the mentor, which was actually created because of COVID, this was a group that came together to talk about this, much like a small group that would get together and talk about different things. They talk about parenting skills. And so this has been an amazing, and then those parents stay connected, and so they talk to each other about what's happening a month, two months, six months down the road, there's ongoing connection. So it is a great program.
And would both of you also say that the increase in numbers is also because our enrollment is changing? More students with special needs moving into our district, more emotional needs are moving into our district, so there's a bigger need for these support services for our students?
Without a doubt. Our clientele in our, in our district, I think of them as sponges. It's a, it's a beautiful thing, because they desperately need the people that work with them every single day. And at the end of the day, as a staff member, you get to go home and say, "I did something today." There's other places where you're screaming at a hurricane, and you can't make any traction, other places where you don't feel needed every day. Our kids need these services, and what we've seen, and that actually is an increase in that need, the world is changing, they're not helping, the world is not helping parents. The world is not in a parent's corner right now. And so they're having to navigate this world that's changing desperately, and so to give kids those skill sets, so that the kid themselves can also navigate the world. The world has changed, that's the absolute truth. Kids have had, you know, a world to navigate for a long time. That's the variable. Kids are not always the variable. Sometimes it's the environment that they're facing in this world that's the variable. And that's where we need to implement skills and learning and growth. If a kid's not good at math, what do we do? We get them a tutor. If a kid isn't great at behaving themselves, what do we do? We need to provide services.
I think the other thing I'd like to bring to your attention is Heidi, through her work, we used to pay for a lot of students to have to go out of district, and those, those prices could be from anywhere to $30,000 to $70,000 a year in tuition to pay for them to go to another school. She's brought those services back to our district for one-tenth that price by combining services within our district. So it's saved the district a lot of money to do that, so we've cut a lot of costs there. But it's also increased the services that you're hearing about. So I don't want somebody to hear, "Oh, they went from one to 20, well, you're costing our district a lot more money." No, we're saving our district a lot more money by providing the services here instead of paying for them to go somewhere else, is the other point I wanted to bring up.
So is there an opportunity, I mean, from what I understand, we have, we have, we have a registered Medicare number for the district. Is this something that we could eventually build and bill these services as a revenue generator instead of an outsourcing project?
We, we actually do bill Medicaid for our related services on IEPs already, and so we generate funds, and those go back into the costs to purchase the services through Hamilton County ESC. So all of our speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, all of those services are billable, and all of those services, where we have parent permission, of course, are billed through our Medicaid billing provider, and then those funds are actually typically a year and a year or more in arrears, and those go back into the cost for that service. They, they don't even cover one-fourth of the cost of the related services that we, that we pay out for those. But we do absolutely maximize our Medicaid billable services where we can.
I think the other important thing to understand, and I'll use Heidi's words, she calls them our little kiddos, they sit, everybody starts out in our regular classrooms, but some kids will... will struggle. It's just part of what they do. I remember one of my three boys had all kinds of issues, had his own carpet squared for the first three, four years of school, had to be rubbed and so on and so forth because of certain issues he had. But they grow out of them eventually. So if you're in a regular classroom with 20 to 25 kids, one kid can be very disruptive. So we have to meet that kid's needs also. But some parents feel like that one or two or three disruptive kids are taking away from everybody else's education. Well, we are a public school system. We have to educate every kid. So they put services in place where maybe a partial day or half a day, they can go somewhere else, receive services, come back to the classroom. And the goal is always to get their needs met and then work their way back to the classroom. Providing these services they put together helps them tremendously. The mental health aspect, behavioral aspect, Melissa's job, Nelson, going in and giving teachers strategies, helping them to look at certain things. You can only do so much punishing. Let's suspend them, let's give them DTs, let's do this. That doesn't work after a while, the kid becomes numb to that. Melissa works with the teachers to give them strategies on the positive rewards and supports you can give them. But there's that fine line in a classroom where the, some parents will think, well, all they do is worry about the negative kids and my kid's missing out on an education. We are a public school system, but it works both ways. And all these support services that we have in place, the goal is to get all kids where they need to be by the time they get out of elementary so they can get where they need to be. So I applaud both of these guys. Dustin is always working in the proactive measure when somebody comes over for a suspension or an expulsion or any type of manner. Heidi is always working with our special needs students to try to put them in the best setting possibly, and she is the best advocate they could have. So they've done great jobs with both their programs.
Can I ask you a question here? Are these referrals to the services that you provide, are they open to custodial staff? You know what I'm saying? Guys sweeping the floor and mopping and the kid just goes crazy on them. Can they get that referral to these services? Transportation, let me, can I finish? Transportation, you got an unruly kid on the bus. Where do we go with the referral to those services on that? Even the security people in the schools, where do they go?
Sure. So many of the services that we talk about are at the accumulation of office referrals. So there were referrals being used in multiple different ways. And so a bus driver, a custodian, anyone in that kid's circle that's watching over that kid can absolutely work with the administration to say, hey, we're seeing a bigger picture here. This wasn't a one-time, we're seeing the same behavior over and over again. Can we talk about a plan? In addition to that, can we also look at other services? Now, the custodian or the bus driver or just a single teacher by themselves with one little piece of data won't enact all of that, but it's the starting point of a conversation with the team that then gets into the services. So what I'm saying to you is for a parent, any parent could ask for therapeutic services. That can happen at any point, at any time along the way. For a staff member to say, I think that kid needs this service. There's a process that has to be followed. That makes sense, right? I mean, you've got to have a bit of a process there. And so they can absolutely enact that process and be on the team that says, hey, what's happening now? What's the next step? How's that going to work? And so whether it be a custodian, transportation, a bus driver, any staff member, they can absolutely work through their administrator to say, let's put some things in place. At a service level, anyone could put a thing in place on a plan level. Can we have a plan for the kid that's walking down the hall because every single time he's kicking the trash cans? We absolutely could put those things in place. When we're talking about these related services, it's that next tier, and that next tier has a process to get to.
I would also just add that I talk with Bob on a regular basis. When he has a concern about a student, he's been fantastic to work with. He gives me a call directly on my cell phone and says, hey, I need to go track down this kid, we need to get some things in place. So Bob has been great in keeping us informed about what's going on with kids. I talked earlier too about PBIS and our process for positive behavioral intervention and supports. And there actually is a process that, you know, there are teams in every building that when there is a student who's struggling, that that student can be brought to that team and the team can really talk about what kind of services and things are going on. We would definitely want to be in contact with the family and the parents about what's going on to keep them informed as well. You know, we can't enact services without parental permission. So while we might be able to, you know, bring a parent in and recommend services, it's ultimately up to them, you know, if they participate. I don't think we have very many families who say, no, thank you. You know, these are services that we are not paying out of pocket for. They are all billed either through insurance or Medicaid or through a grant that Children's Home has.
What if a parent comes in and says, my Johnny or my Janie isn't a bad kid and you got it wrong, but you know that kid has reached a second level? What do you do then?
Well, first off, we've got to redefine. Because if a parent's coming in and saying to us, my kid's not a bad kid, then we've got to work on a relationship issue. Because that parent thinks that the school team thinks their kid is bad, we need to connect that thought. We need to clear that up. Because honestly, we have fantastic kids. Our kids face so much in their life and they need things that we can provide for them. Some of them need skills to be in an environment that is a school setting. That is the absolute truth. After we redefine what that looks like, we sit down with that parent, we say, okay, what do we need? What are the strategies? Where are the gaps of this? What behaviors are we seeing? Maybe we watch for a week, maybe we watch for two weeks and we collect that data. Are we seeing all the same stuff? Is the kid can't sit down? The kid can't sit down for long? The kid always has a distraction? The kid is often speaking out of turn, is rebellious to authority? What is the skill that we need to work on that we can develop a plan around and then work with that parent? Sometimes that plan looks like some of these bigger things we've talked about. We've talked about some pretty big items here that are at the top of those tiers. Ninety-five percent of the time, it's that classroom teacher working with the parent, let's make a plan, let's make an incentive plan, let's work on some things and let's watch for two or three weeks. Let's get back together. Let's do it again. In the meantime, there could be discipline that's also a part of that. There are infractions to the code, it's absolute correct discipline. That is the absolute truth. On the backside of discipline, as discipline goes up, so does intervention. So you can't just have discipline stand alone. It has to go with intervention. Sometimes it looks like some of these bigger tier things we talked about. Sometimes it looks like just in the classroom, can we change a couple of things? So ultimately, the kids are not bad, and our principals believe the same. They are facing some really difficult things, and we need to help them navigate that. Because no matter what, at the end of that suspension, the kid's coming back, and we need to talk about what that looks like. The kid is coming back to some educational setting. We need to talk about what that looks like. And so we have to make a plan around that.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Take it on my mission? Yes. We'll take a five-minute break, and then when we come back, we'll start with diversity and equity. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody back. Thanks for accommodating our break. Like to remind everyone that since this is Facebook Live and being recorded by Wade Cross, at any time, you can pull this back up and watch or let your friends know that it will be available to review at any time. Also would like to remind you that the folks that are at the podium, they will take their mask off and just have the shield on so you can better hear what they're saying and hopefully accommodate those to better understand what's being said. So we are visiting our pillars for our strategic plan and reviewing the process that was developed by our stakeholders, our community members, our parents, students, and staff. And we are on our third pillar, and it will be presented by Darryl Yater, our Assistant Superintendent on Diversity and Equity.
Thank you, Todd. So our third area of our strategic plan is diversity and equity. And like all other of the focus areas, we have a goal statement. And our goal is to develop cultural competency that embraces diversity, ensures inclusivity, and creates equitable opportunity for all. And you'll see there are three prongs to that. It's around diversity, inclusivity, and equity. And so I want to start by kind of framing those concepts for you with a graphic. If we look at this graphic, the top left is inequality. You have a tree leaning, and basically this is luck of the draw. You're in the right place at the right time, you're on the side, where it falls, you get it. Equality is, we give everybody the exact same thing, but because of the way it's designed, one person is able to get what they need, another one, it's still out of reach. When we talk about equity, equity is about giving people what they need, when they need it, and how they need it so they have access. So some people might need a taller ladder in order to reach the tree so they can actually get it, so that everybody gets equal access. When we talk about the last one, justice, it's about looking at our systems and do we have things that we need to fix with our systems so that we are creating equity through correcting systemic structures that we have in place? This is a long view. This topic of DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion is not something that is quick. It's a long-term approach that we take to how we create systems that are equitable and inclusive. So we have multiple objectives that we're looking at. And when we talk about that, diversity is who we are. Inclusion is how we feel. Are you included? Do you feel like you belong? Equity is being able to access everything that you need. And then we have objectives that help us lead toward realizing some of those aspirational statements. One of them is to work with students and parents to actually understand opportunities and increase cultural awareness and participation in curricular and extracurricular activities. So making sure that all of our students, regardless of where they come from, have the same opportunity to participate in higher-level courses in extracurriculars. This is about removing barriers and increasing access through education with our parents. One of the things you're going to see is although this is the third area you're hearing about tonight, although we're presenting them in isolation, all of them tend to overlap. And you'll see the integration as we talk about this as it relates to achievement, this as it relates to SEL. We also are looking at building a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive learning environment that's accessible. So we're talking about learning as we talk about DEI. Some things that we've done, all of our buildings have a, all of our elementaries and middle schools are Title I funded buildings, and they have an allocation of parent involvement. And some of them are starting to use that parent involvement, as we talked about with parent outreach, to really start to build some of the cultural competencies into that. A good example is Taylor Elementary just finished a project where over the winter break, they developed a flat, like Flat Stanley, it was Flatness Really. So kids were able to take Miss Really home with them over break, and they were able to document with their family cultures and traditions that they have that were unique to their family, to their culture, where they come from. And then they sent those back to the building so that they could share all the different cultures and traditions from their building across the entire building. So really helping people understand the richness of the diversity within that building. We have partnered with Georgetown University twice, once in 2015, to talk about reducing disparities as it related to school removals around truancy, which is how we developed our truancy court that we have our safe council. That was a collaboration with Hamilton County Juvenile Court and the Legal Aid Society. In 2019, Georgetown actually came to Cincinnati. We submitted an application that brought together us, Cincinnati Public, Princeton City Schools, Legal Aid, Hamilton County Juvenile Court, Hamilton County Jobs and Family Services, and Hamilton County Educational Service Center to again, look at how we address disparities in school removals for students with disabilities and racial disparities in removals. And all three districts were addressing the same issue, and we came together to collaborate. Georgetown led us through a week-long institute, and since then, they've been offering technical support. We meet monthly as a team with representatives from all of those seven agencies to put together different actions. And part of it is about developing code of conduct, which goes back to social emotional learning, which is talking about how to do trauma-informed care, developing some of those alternatives to discipline that Heidi and Dustin just talked about. So you start to see the overlap between the different areas of our strategic plan as we start to really bring that to fruition. We, as a district, have released statements about racism, hatred, and violence, and have really put out there the fact that we, as a district, are creating a safe, inclusive environment for all. White Oak actually went through a process because of their logo and some of the feedback they got about their logo being culturally insensitive, and they went through a process to actually change and rebrand their school in light of that. Our high schools have diversity clubs where students are able to come together under the leadership of a teacher who has the stipend to run that and really start digging into and understanding and celebrating the diversity within their school. We have, for probably about four or five years, participated with the Bowles Center out of Northern Kentucky. They host an annual education and leadership conference for students at the high school level where students can actually get access to seminars on character development, leadership development, financial aid, how to build resiliency in terms of moving into that next level of academic achievement. Cultural competency is part of the PBIS, which Heidi and Dustin talked about, that positive behavior intervention and support. That's about building a culture. And part of that culture is about being culturally responsive so that people understand who's in the building with them, where they come from, and they celebrate that diversity and value that. The State Superintendent of Ohio has just recently created an advisory group supporting school and district equity that's bringing together people from all over the state to try to understand how to collaborate to build equitable structures in their district. I participate on that council for our district so that we can collaborate and learn from other people across the state. So a lot happening to try to build those two objectives out. We are also focusing on these two objectives, creating a safe, inclusive environment that honors, embraces, and celebrates the diversity of students in our schools and communities, and increasing the number of minority new hires by classification, and retaining employees to make the staff representative of student population. So really trying to make sure that our staff represent the cultures and the identities of the community that we serve. We have started about three years ago, creating a pathway through Ashland University to grow our own. We have a lot of great staff who may be a classroom assistant, or they're in a building, but they have aspirations of becoming a teacher. They're in schools because they love kids, they want to support kids, and some of them are actually trying to move into that realm to be a teacher. And we wanted to support people in our ranks to actually get to that level. So through Ashland, they can go into a cohort that actually gives them the Pell rate, so they have greatly reduced tuition. The board actually voted and changed policy that would allow for us to offer tuition reimbursement to our classified staff who are going through education courses to become teachers. And because when they get to the point they have to student teach, they are going to have to take time off of work, and there was no leave available for that other than resigning your position, the board also added in sabbatical leave so people could take the time off they need in an unpaid status to do their student teaching and then come back to their position, finish out, and then hopefully have that degree so they can move into a different position within the district. Because it's unpaid, we know that can be a financial burden, so we worked with our partner at the credit union, and the credit union offered a special program that when someone gets to that level, they could actually get a low-interest loan through the credit union to be able to support themselves through that transition if they needed to. So we've been trying to work on some grow our own programs to allow people the opportunity to move and advance themselves if they would like to do that. We created a diversity leadership team. So this is a leadership team of district personnel. It includes administrators, and then we have a stipend for teachers and classified staff who wanted to be on the team. It was an application process. People actually had to apply, fill out some questions about why it was important to them to be a part of this team. And so we created this team. And so we created this team, and we have classified staff, we have teachers, we have administrators, who, starting this year, formed this team, who are actually modeling what Brenda talked about with the LLT, the Literacy Initiative. And so we're going through, as a team, professional development from Hamilton County Educational Service Center with Patrice Cate, who has developed a program called One Degree Shift that really looks at understanding identity, culture, and cultural competency. So our team is going through that and developing ourselves as experts so that we can then guide and lead professional development. And we've already talked about how the professional development from this team and the professional development from the student achievement team, the LLT, is going to have to merge, and we're going to have to work together so that we integrate how we're delivering some of this content. We are always trying to maximize and hire diverse candidates, as is every other district around us. It's a very competitive field. And so we prioritize minority candidates for interviews in our interview pools. We actually brought in Rice Educational Consulting to audit our hiring and retention practices. And so they are presenting us in the next couple of weeks a plan that will actually guide us in some actions that we can take that will hopefully make us more attractive as a district for candidates to look to us to be a place where they would like to be. We also are looking at how we retain people once we have them in the district. And then as people leave, we continue to look at exit survey data to see why people are leaving and dig into that to see if there are things that we can do. And most people are leaving for retirement, for a family issue, or they're moving to another district for another opportunity, whether it be they're looking for a higher pay, they're looking for a different group of students to work with, or an advancement opportunity that we didn't have available at the time. Where do we go from here? We continue to implement strategies for retention and recruitment. Retention is great for us because the more we keep staff and grow them and develop them, the farther we move and the faster we move. Because we don't have to continue to bring people in, get them up to speed, train them on the structures we have in place, the systems we have in place, and where we are as a district. And then professional development, really bringing to our staff awareness of cultural competencies, understanding that not everybody interprets what you say and do in the exact same way, and understanding why people respond the way they do, really will help develop those relationships so that we have a culture where people feel like they belong, and teachers can then do the instruction that Brenda outlined in her presentation. And then we'll continue to work with counselors in the curriculum department to look at our courses, what we offer, and pathways we have so that all students have access to courses that they want to get into. It's really hard at the high school level, if you get into the high school and you're not in the certain track, to switch. And being able to provide students, because not everybody knows what they want to do when they're moving into ninth grade. That's a really difficult year, and people's ideas of what they're going to do change. And we need a lot of supports in place to be able to support kids as they navigate those waters of what I'm going to do after graduation. So we have a lot of things that are up and coming that we're working on. But again, a lot of this starts to dovetail with the work that Brenda outlined and the work that Dustin and Heidi outlined as all of these start to cross over. Questions?
Can I ask you if you, if the district offers ESL classes at night for parents so they can better transition to what's going on in the district?
We used to. We used to partner with Butler Tech. They had a program called ABLE that allowed for us to have programs in the evening for parents who were non-English speaking to go through and learn English as a second language. That program actually got defunded, so we were not able to continue that. So we did have that until funding changed.
Is there any possible way, given the influx of...
It's something we can continue to look at because the communication and the working with ELL families, we do work very diligently with our website to make sure that it's accessible in multiple languages. We communicate in multiple languages. But Joe, I hear what you're saying. There is that support when we talk about wrapping around families, and this whole idea of educating kids is it takes a village, and the parents are part of that village and supporting them. So finding another program would be something that is definitely on our radar, it's just not there yet. Good question.
How many students have participated in your student teaching project and in coordination with your credit?
We have five staff members currently. When we first rolled it out, we had some other staff members who were interested, but they were already enrolled in other programs, and they didn't want to shift. So we're getting to that kind of college enrollment period, so we'll be rolling out this again, hopefully getting more people interested in that cohort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Our next pillar is financial stability, and this will be Amy Wells, Jenny Bless, and Chris McKee.
Good evening. I'm going to start talking about the financial stability pillar, and I'm here kind of representing Amy Wells, myself, and Chris is going to be speaking in a little while on one of the objectives. Like everyone else did, I want to start talking about our goal statement for this pillar, and that is that we're going to create a stronger foundation of financial stability that ensures an optimal learning experience for all. When we did our strategic plan, the group of people that were doing that came up with three strategic objectives for us to address. One was encouraging continuous two-way communication in our community on how our schools are funded, how funds are spent, and what is needed to provide educational services. The second was to align our district resources with instructional priorities that were set, and then partner with our community to develop a transparent funding cycle. I'm going to start at the bottom with the transparent funding cycle because it became very obvious right away that we needed to convince our community that we were going to be responsible, and that we, as an administrative team and you as a board, were going to make some commitments to how we were going to spend money in our district. So I want to step back a little bit to a couple of the policies and resolutions that have been put in place over the last couple of years. This one was actually in 2016 is when it started. But this one was about the cash reserve. And the board has committed to having a cash reserve equivalent to at least three months of operating expenses, because our board believes that that is what we need to have in place to be financially stable, right? And if you want to note, that's $25 million, that's three months. And we're going to manage this, and the treasurer is going to report to the board at any indication that we're falling below that target. And at that point, the board is going to have to look at ways to increase revenues, find new sources of revenue, and/or managing our funds differently, possibly, you know, reducing expenditures. The second one I want to draw your attention to is a resolution of district financial parameters and community partnership. The summary of this is that we're going to continue to use those financial parameters. We were kind of reinforcing that we were looking at those policies that we have in place. We're going to continue to commit to student achievement. We're going to continually evaluate our facilities and maintain the community's investment in them. That includes technology, infrastructure, and equipment that we need to provide 21st century skills to our Northwest students. And most importantly, that we're going to make sure that when we're putting our budgets together for the next fiscal year, that there will be no more than an average of 3% growth for fiscal years 2020 through 2023. And that while there may be a deviation from this percentage of growth each year, we're going to make sure that we're capping those so that we can keep our cash balance reserve policy in place, right? Any deviations from this are going to have to be approved by the Board of Education. These are our commitments that we've made to our community about how we're going to manage our money in our district. Just recently, we had the onset of the pandemic and, you know, all of the things that came with that and all the expenses. At that point, we really didn't know what kind of funding, I mean, we were going to get from the federal government to help with those things. We didn't know when we were going to get those funds. So the board passed a resolution that said that the treasurer could utilize up to one month of those operating expense reserves during the 2021 school year if it was needed to address special needs. But if we did that, we were going to take actions that were needed to restore those balances by 6/30 of 2023. I did, after reviewing all these policies, I did talk to Amy and said, have we enacted that? And we actually haven't. There has been no need to do that. We've received money from the CARES Acts and all those different, and we were able to use those monies as soon as we received them to take care of a lot of our needs this year. So just, those are just some things that we've taken action on already to kind of try to talk to our community and tell our community that we're serious about this and we really want to be, you know, open about how we're managing our money. The second objective that I wanted to address was the communication with staff and community about school funding. So we came up with an action step for this, and that was that we were going to create a financial stability team, and that team was going to be focused on having discussions with community members, teachers, administrators, and a very diverse group around what does the community want to know? What do they need to know? And what's the best way to get information to our various stakeholders? We found out very quickly from this group that our stakeholders are very varied. They're very diverse. And what you might want is very different than what a community member who doesn't have students in our schools might want. The way you get information might be very different than the way they get information. So it was a really interesting few meetings that we had, listening to people. Some of the outcomes of those meetings were that we put together a public annual financial report, the PAFR, which is mailed home to our residents, because that's what they asked for. They asked that those things were mailed and not just posted, because there are a lot of things that are posted on our website. As you can see, we did a review of our information on our website, but something quick, easy to read, that they could just look at and get some information about our district. And this is the current one that just went home to all of our residents. And then we had one from last year that's in here somewhere that looked like this. So a quick, you know, opening shot, and most of you probably already received it. So we did review the information on our website, and, you know, we moved some things around. We talked about whether people are even looking at some of these things. Is it easy to find? Is it easy to read? What else do you want? We've included a financial Q and A, question and answer document, or video, that's been included in our resident educator activities. And the resident educator is a program that our new teachers go through, not just our new teachers, but teachers new to the teaching profession, and they have professional development that's designed by us. And we've included things on all the pillars, and one of the pillars is the financial stability pillar. And Amy did a Q and A with the person who was helping us to put that together, so that it's an activity that they have to complete. And so all new teachers hear her Q and A about the district finances and some of our reasons for doing things. Based on our information from our team, we also increased our focus on looking at alternative sources of funding, things like crowdfunding, business partnerships, and how we can utilize those a little better, and grants. Not knowing when we started doing that, that grants were going to become a huge source of revenue for us in the district. And the other thing that we've been doing, and you'll hear more about this from Lindsay Creasy later, is that we've increased the amount of information that's being put out on social media and how we're communicating with our community on social media, because if you've been around as long as I have, we used to put everything in the Northwest Press. You know, that used to be the main source of information in this district. But now, social media is where people are getting their information, and so we had to move toward that. So some of our next steps are that we need to start getting out some communication about our federal COVID relief funds and how we're using those funds in our district, and, you know, what our priorities are for those funds. And also communication regarding the impact of the Hamilton County Property Tax Triennial Update. How is that? People are hearing that. People are seeing their tax bills come out, and they're changing. And so we need to get some information out to our community, letting them know how that will affect us. The next area that I want to talk quickly about is the alignment of resources and instructional priorities. So our action step in this area was to develop a way to demonstrate alignment of our district priorities with budgets, expenditures, that includes methods for evaluating the return on the investment. So not only does our community want to know what our goals are, what our priorities are, they want to know what money are we spending on each of those priorities? And then if we're spending money on those priorities, how are we measuring whether we're getting a return on that investment? If we're throwing, you know, putting a million, not throwing, putting a million dollars into a specific program, how are we measuring whether or not we're getting, you know, there's an impact to our students? Is it improving student achievement? Because if it's not, how long are we going to give it before we do something different? So our outcomes are that, early on in this process, our administrative team participated in a very intense training from the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, which talked about how you measure return on investment, how you look at starting a program, how you look at sunsetting a program when you've done it for 20 years and it's just the way you do business. How do you change? Or how do you decide if it's important to change? And then we are currently Cohort One in the state, completing something called the One Needs Assessment, and it's a long, involved process of a series of questions that help us to have good discussions so that when we do our comprehensive continuous improvement plan, the CCIP, which is aligned to all of our federal funds, that that plan is in alignment with our strategic plan. We don't need to have three different plans, four different plans. We need to have one plan in our district, and everything needs to be aligned. Our next step is that we are working to create a district comprehensive budget document that will align our goals, our strategies, our funding sources and amounts, and our methods for evaluating progress. So if I'm a community member, I could look and say, you have a focus on literacy. The strategies we're looking at to improve literacy in our district are these. The funding sources, the amount of money and the funding sources that we're putting towards this goal are these, and this is how we're going to evaluate whether or not that's working, right? That's a very large undertaking. It's a moving target sometimes, so we're working on that, but that's one of our goals and our next steps in this process. So when we put together the team, it very quickly became two teams. For our financial stability team, one team started talking about communication and all the things that I was talking about and what our community wants to know, needs to know. The second group really started focusing on that facility needs, and how do we keep our eye on what our needs for facilities are and the costs involved? So Chris McKee is going to take over here. Do you want me to push your phone forward, please?
No. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hey, Chris.
Like Jenny said, the facilities is a huge financial impact on the district, so it's a very important topic, very special to me, of course. As you've heard, all the hard work that's going on in the buildings academically, I've got a ton of great people working for me to make things happen, to keep buildings, because we need those buildings for the education of our students to go on. So how are we doing? One of the things we need to look at is the efficiency of how we operate our buildings. So the next four slides will show you some reports from ODE. They're comprised of similar districts, and it kind of shows you... So how are we doing? One of the things we need to look at is the efficiency of how we operate our buildings. So the next four slides will show you some reports from ODE. They're comprised of similar districts. And it kind of shows you where we stand. This slide shows the cost per square foot of our overall operation compared to five other districts.
You might have to tell them what they're seeing. It's pretty tough to see. I mean, where we fall in that chart.
Yep. So if you look at that chart, I tried to highlight the green line, but you can't see that. So if you look at the highlighted line, that's Northwest Local School District. Just keep in mind through these slides that 2016 through 2018, we were heavy into construction. So it's kind of amazing to see how flat some of these lines are. And how, in fact, in some cases, as we completed construction in 2018 and moved into 2019, we were able to even cut costs and lower costs. This slide is of the custodial maintenance cost per square foot. There again, the highlighted line at the bottom shows that Northwest is the lowest, has the lowest cost per square foot for custodial maintenance. We've got a fantastic custodial crew in-house, where a lot of other districts outsource. And we also have our own in-house maintenance crew of only eight guys. They do a lot of hard work, very busy. But I really appreciate all the work they do. This is the slide of square foot per pupil. You can see we're kind of in the middle. But that just tells you how many square feet, based on how many students we have. You can see the slight increase, which can mean, obviously mean two things. At that time, in 18, we increased a little bit of square footage with our new buildings. And I think we've also seen a slight decrease in our student population, which would also make that, that grow. And this slide is really important to me. It shows the utility cost per square foot. As you can see, we're, we're kind of in the middle. We're decreasing there at the end. The important thing to me is if you, there again, you look at that 2016 through 2018, when we were heavy into construction, we added air conditioning to every building in the district. Yet our utility cost didn't go sky high. You didn't see a, a peak like the other line that you see up there at one of our others, one of the other school districts. Actually, after construction, also when these, when HVAC was installed, the air conditioning was, was installed, we also installed a control system in each building. Through that control system, we can really gain efficiency with those units. And that's where, with that and the purchasing of our utilities, you can see that decreasing in the year 2019. So just like Jenn-
Question?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
So those other schools that we were compared with, are they all similar in enrollment? Or what, or how do you compare those schools?
Yes, I mean, ODE puts that together, similar schools and enrollment demographics.
Size and demographics.
So just like Jenny's group and, and the other groups, we had some action steps. The first one was that we had to create a facility advisory committee. And what we wanted to look at was the current repair and replacement cost, future needs, current operational efficiency, which we just talked about. And we wanted to look at potential options for funding. Obviously, when you talk about facilities, we're going to end up talking about money. Just like your home costs us money to maintain and, and run these facilities. And they get old and, and need repairs. So the outcomes of some of our meetings was identifying our physical assets amount to over $285 million. That's 1.3 million square feet of, of buildings. We compiled a list of all the district facility needs, which we found far outweigh our current funding for, for the repairs. What this typically tells you is that there's been deferred maintenance. And I can tell you from what you're going to see here in a minute, it's been many years of deferred maintenance. So the longer you defer, naturally, the harder it is to, to play catch-up. We currently have an $800,000 annual permanent improvement budget. By pulling other districts in the area and putting it together and comparing square footage, shows that we should be spending roughly $4 million to $4.5 million per year in our permanent improvements. When we went through and identified those building needs, that amounted to, across the district, $47 million of estimated repairs that are needed. At our current funding rate, that would take 59 years to complete. And that's if nothing changed, right? That's if we froze everything, nothing got older, nothing broke. It would take us 59 years at that funding rate. The other most important piece of that is 6.5 million of that is in roofing repairs that, that we need to schedule and get, get moving on. Obviously, that can create a huge problem while you're trying to conduct school, right? And it's also been noted that typically it costs four times to replace something than it does to repair or restore. So if we can maintain and take care of things instead of running through its total life cycle and then having to replace it, we can save a lot of money or, or avoid a lot of costs. So what's the next steps? Back in December, the board approved to enter into another ELP agreement with the state of Ohio. What does that do for us? Unfortunately, we're not seeing our funding number come up until possibly 2024, but we don't know. We've never been able to nail down that number, and neither can anyone else. But right now, it's looking like it could be 2024. That's pretty far out. Especially with the, the needs that we have. But what it does for us, by entering into that agreement, it triggers the state to step back in, reevaluate our buildings, recreate our master plan, and also they'll do an enrollment projection. We would also want to contract with a third-party vendor for the enrollment projections. We want to do this because it's been found that typically, the enrollment projection performed by the state usually comes in under, which ends up undersizing your building as well. So we want to have a third-party come in, do our independent enrollment projection. So that if that does happen, we have something to work with the state on, on getting that number and the size of the, the facilities where we need it. We also want to contract with an architect to begin, and this is the biggest part, the research of the facility needs. Do we restructure using existing facilities and rent, and do renovations? Do we add new facilities, demo the old ones? Or what other possibilities are there? So we'd have to take a look at everything and come up with some paths that, that we can start following. But once we kind of get that information together, then we need to start getting out to our staff and the community and, and really start having, having some visioning and some hard talks on what this district wants for its kids. So we also tried to identify some potential funding options. So here's the hard part to talk about all the time, because you have to say the, the dirty word levy, right? But let's start off with, back when we constructed the three new buildings, through the ELP program with OFCC, we were able to accumulate $17 million in credit. So that means that when our number comes up, they automatically throw in $17 million towards our project. But there again, our project doesn't come up right. Our number doesn't come up until, you know, maybe 2024. The community could renew millage from the 1999 Monford Heights bonds that'll expire in 2022. That was a 1.15 mil. Which, which that's an option. And it, it would be very good for the community.
How much is that in real dollars? 1.15 mil?
It's going to be based on valuation.
And the number of years.
At the time. So right now, it's 1.7 per mil. 1.7 million dollars per mil. And then you got to take it, if you're, if you're going to do that, is bonds. So how many years of bonds? Multiply it up.
So potentially, you could have a permanent improvement levy if we just want to take care of, of our current needs. But there again, do we want to levy our community to death? Or do we want to put together a, a good, solid plan? And then let them decide on how they want to move forward? You could run an all-new bond levy. Just go ahead and let those mills roll over from Monford Heights and, and just run a new levy. I mean, that's an option. Also, for your permanent improvements, you can move inside millage. Currently, we utilize two mills, which is $3 million for the, the items there below, which is $1 million for the Houseville 264 High School blended labs, $500,000 for our bus replacement schedule, $700,000 for our technology replacement schedule. And what I've talked about before, the $800,000 for our maintenance permanent improvement schedule, for a total of $3 million. There's also 4.33 mills that would be available to move, which you could move part or all. But there again, you know, that's something that-
If you're going to move those, though, you have to move them for those five options you got up there?
Just for permanent improvements.
Permanent improvements.
Just for permanent improvement.
And then you split it up, how?
Whatever that permanent improvement is. Gotcha.
Questions?
I guess the, the thing that I think about is, like, first of all, I commend you and your management team. They, they really do, when you look at the numbers, with, with the age of some of these buildings, it could be astronomical. Which leads me into my next comment. Like, at some point, when, so the ODE comparisons that they gave us, how many of them schools had two high schools?
I don't know that. I would have to research that.
I, I would like for you to research that.
Sure. I can probably tell you. Let me pull them back up here.
Because I, my, my, what I'm getting at is, at some point, Northwest Local School District is going to have to look at the footprint of Northwest Local School District.
Absolutely.
And, and that may be consolidating the two high schools. At some point.
Well, and the, you know, the other thing that we look at with high schools-
One high school for all. So we're the only one with two high schools?
Yeah.
With two big campuses that we maintain. And that's not, I'm sure that's not the only expense for facilities in our district. But, I mean, I, I guess at some point, as we're putting these committees together and we're looking at it, I, I think we're getting really good feedback from our community in these, in these pillar meetings. Like, I think now is the time to start talking about that discussion. Because it's not something that you decide on that, and then six months later, you're putting some kind of plan together. It's something that you got to get the buy-in, you got to see, you know, where it's at. But I, I don't see, I, I think our community is somewhat landlocked, and I don't have data to back this up, or my theory, I'll say. You know, we're not seeing our population grow, our student population grow. So if it's not growing, and potentially that, we're downsizing it, I think at some point, we're, we're going to have to, I always use the analogy of, if I know I'm losing my job in six months, I'm not going to go out and buy a new car. I'm not going to up my cable bill. I'm not going to do any of that. I'm going to start downsizing. And I think we owe it to the community that we start looking at that, doing our due diligence, and, and say, look, you know, strategically, five years from now, 10 years from now, this is where we need to, we need to focus this compass, so.
Well, I, I totally agree with you, Mark. And it, it's a very huge topic, because where's education going? In our high schools, you know, are we going to see a lot more of the remote-type work going on? Is it going to be more of a, a college setting? We've got some other programs that are paralleling, you know, the work that we're trying to come up with. So we really got to see what the high school redesign looks like.
And Chris, if I'm not mistaken, your committee, which consisted of Colrain and Northwest Parents, already started having that conversation before the pandemic hit.
Yes, yes.
That's great.
So we'll put that group together. We want to grow that group. In my opinion, we didn't have enough people and enough diversity on that group. So we want to grow that group and really get the community involved. And, you know, these are their facilities, and this is their school district. And we want them involved.
I, I could see, I, I think, and Todd, and we've talked about this, education is not going to look like it did, probably ever again. And so we, we have a population of people who struggle to, to support their children in a virtual environment. Like, if we re, and, and I'm, I'm just envisioning here. I'm not saying this is what we do. But if, if we did something like that, and we put an, an area together that people who need to apply, if they could drop their kids off there, we will, we will help them through their virtual learning, because they don't have the resources for that. And we could think out of the box and make this thing really, really work for our community.
Well, but that's exactly what the visiting, visioning sessions do. They're going to dive into the things you've never even thought of.
Perfect.
So it'll, it'll be interesting. Anything else?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris, Jenny, Amy. All right, that brings us to our last pillar, and that's culture of trust. And we're going to start that off with Lindsay Creasy and myself. And so we'll let Lindsay start off with our communication part. Welcome, Lindsay.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Just for, as a question, I want to turn it-
There's a button to the right and left. So if you click to the right, it'll go forward. See the little arrow?
Perfect.
There you go.
All right. All right, so you all ready? I'm ready.
Give it to us.
All right, let's go. Listen, I'm so proud of you all. We've gotten to the last pillar. It's been a lot, right? And so, I guess the last key goal. And so, you know, you all have sat through a lot tonight. But if you could just bear with me just a little bit longer, we'll wrap it all up, right? So first, we're going to talk about the culture of trust. And going back to what Todd said, I, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Lindsay Creasy, for those that do not know me. And I'm going to cover one part of the culture of trust. But, you know, like I said, you all have heard all the goal areas of the strategic plan. But the foundation of our strategic plan really is trust, right? You really cannot fulfill any of the other goal areas if you do not have trust, which is very important. It's not only the foundation of our strategic plan, but it's also the foundation of all the work we do each and every day. Everything is built upon trust. And so part of that is creating a new system for how we communicate and how we build relationships in this district. And that takes us to our goal statement. Our goal is to establish a sustained commitment to people, initiatives, and plans. And you may look at that and say, like, well, where is trust in that statement, right? But when we look back at past communication, when we look back at things that, the comments and feedback that we've gotten from staff and stakeholders, you see that there have been a, a, a lot of things that have not necessarily been consistent, right? And reliable. And so part of our goal is to make sure that, in all things that we do, that we are maintaining consistency and that we are reliable in, you know, our commitment to people and to the initiatives, and also to the plans that we have in place. There are three strategic objectives that we are going to be working with, right? The first one is to create a transparent communication plan, which is very important. This is, you know, a consistent communication plan. And I think we have to continue to emphasize that word, consistent communication plan. It's built on common language, right? We also have to identify and implement opportunities for stakeholders to be heard, involved, and engaged, and to provide training and resources to cultivate healthy relationships. And so you'll see here, on the left-hand side, we have all of the strategic objectives. And on the right-hand side, we have the action steps. So when we're looking- So when we're looking at creating a transparent communication plan, here we have this word again, consistent communication plan that has a common language. And you may wonder what I mean by that, right? So we found in the past that we've obviously got 11 schools. And we may have one school that's communicating one thing, you know, and two or three other schools that are communicating another. And one thing that we need to do is continue to develop that communication from the district level and disseminate that out to all of our schools. So that we can make sure that all of our schools are really on the same page. When we don't do that, we have parents that write in, staff members that write in that may say, well, why is, you know, school A getting this and school B isn't, right? And they could all be really doing the same thing and they are. It's really all about the communication and making sure that when we are rolling out an initiative, when we're rolling out a plan, when we're moving forward, whether it's the reopen or whether or not we are moving to the second semester, that we are all on the same page. So common language is very important. It should include things like the who, when, what's the purpose? And how does that relate to the communication plan? And not just the communication plan, but sometimes how does that relate to our strategic plan that we have that we are moving forward? These action steps were created a couple of years ago when we first rolled out the strategic plan. And some of them are great, but we also know that some of these need to be, we need to unpack them a little bit further. And as we go deeper into the presentation, we'll talk about how we have continued to kind of unpack each of these action steps that we have. And the last is to continue to promote what is taking place in and out of the classroom. On the strategic objective number two, it says identify and implement opportunities for stakeholders to be heard, involved and engaged. And that includes providing opportunities for input by community members. The going to community locations for face-to-face conversations. So that parents and staff can have, you know, time to ask questions and time to get answers. And to also involve feeder schools together, right? And also using a variety of communication strategies. And then the strategic objective, the last one is provide training and resources to cultivate healthy relationships. And those relationships really need to be restorative. We talked a lot about trust and trust is very difficult really to actualize, right? Mainly because trust is oftentimes captured in how we think and how we feel. It takes, you know, it could take a thousand opportunities for you to establish trust with someone and one opportunity for you to establish distrust, right? And so we know that there are some people that we are building and establishing that trust with, those new families, those new students, our new staff members that are coming to our district. But we also realize and know that we have a lot of staff and students that we are rebuilding that relationship with them. And it's going to take a lot of consistency, doing a lot of things over and over and over again in order for us to restore some of those relationships that may have been broken in the past. It also means putting district resources that will trickle down to the buildings and providing support groups and mental health checks for all staff in a variety of different ways. And as we go through, like I said, the rest of our presentation, we'll really unpack how we're doing a lot of these things. So communication is, and I've said this again, I'm going to keep saying it just because I love the word communication, you know, it's kind of my job, right? But it plays a very important role in establishing and improving the culture of trust in our district with our internal and our external stakeholders. We believe that that strong bond is really the backbone for any organization's success, right? It doesn't matter what organization it is, we're looking at a school district, we really need it. It's important. And when we first sat down, we really began looking at the strategic plan and began looking at the communication tools that we had in place and assessing whether or not they were really meeting our needs. And we also began looking at various ways to put structures in place that would yield the type of results that we were really looking for. To do that, let's see, we're going to move to objective number two. And actually on this slide, it's objective number one, we moved it up just so that it made sense to you all. But first, the first objective we're going to look at is creating a transparent communication plan. And there are really three things that we are doing to make sure that, that kind of go into carrying out this objective plan, right? Or this plan. So the first is improving and enhancing our external media outlets. The second is our internal communication. And the third is establishing two-way communication. So when we say we're going to create a transparent communication plan, we're really going to do those three things. We're going to talk a little bit more about it. So let's first look at improving and enhancing our external and internal media outlets. So one of the first thing that we did was overhaul, and I guess we could say sunset it, our content management system, right? And you may wonder what a content management system is. It really is essentially just our website and all the things that kind of come packed together with it. In August of 2019, we rolled out an all-exclusive content management system that provided our district with a website, a communication system that included the ability to send phone, text, email and social media messaging and provided our district stakeholders with a mobile app that would make access to our information easier and faster. So we have one company and one system that's doing all of those things. Our new CMS package really allowed us to disseminate pop-up alerts, which is really important, right? We, one of the ways that you build trust is when there's a crisis situation or when there's urgent information that needs to be disseminated, parents want to be able to access that information very quickly. So having a website that, you know, as soon as you click on that a pop-up alert or banner alert is at the top is very essential. We needed it. When we went through our reopening plan, our pop-ups were up every day. Making sure that any new information we had about food distribution or when we were going to go back to school was always, you know, engaged and ready. We also, it also prioritized communication that is released. So our new website has multiple ways in which we disseminate information. Our big banners that we have at the top allow us to, you know, put information there and news stories there as well as the news stories are at the bottom as well. It connects our community to our social media sites, which I think is very important. We have so many teachers that are communicating each and every day about the things that are happening in their classroom. Our students are learning about STEM, right? Some of them may be covering robotics or there are just a lot of things that are kind of happening in all of our classrooms each and every day. And so when our teachers are sharing with their social media sites, when we repost it, it actually pops up on our website, which keeps our community from having to click multiple different places. All those things kind of pop up on our feed, which is very important. It connects our stakeholders to important videos and statistics. And when you're looking at our mobile app, it allows our stakeholders to individually determine the amount of communication that they want to receive, which is important. A lot of people don't want to be inundated with notifications. Others do. And so with our mobile app, it takes our website and it condenses all the most important data into an easy accessible, I guess, design that parents can access the most important things. But they can also choose the types of notifications that they want. If they only want district-wide, they can have, you know, district-wide or district notifications only. But if they want to sign up for four or five different buildings, they can do that as well. The next way that we worked on improving and enhancing our external and our internal media outlets was by news stories. Looking at print, television and radio. You know, trust is extremely important. And we have to utilize our media outlets to share information about everything that's happening in our school district. This method of communication really builds trust because the information is communicated and it's disseminated by trusted news sources, right? And I should say, when we say news story, we're talking print, which is newspapers, we're talking television. So local TV shows and then also well-known radio stations too. But not only does it disseminate, you know, information and communicate information from trusted news sources, it reaches community members that are not associated with our schools. Meaning that they either don't have kids that are currently enrolled or maybe their, you know, children graduated years ago. In 2019, we began compiling an archive of news stories that evolved or mentioned our school districts in order to maintain a pulse on our organization's reach. And also to really determine the perception that our community and stakeholders have about our school district. When I first started, I was told that no, we never had any news stories in the newspaper. So one of my goals was to, on day one, you know, one, put news stories out, but to also make sure that we were keeping an archive of each one of those stories that made it and that was considered to be published in order for us to know how many stories actually made the news. And to also determine whether or not those stories were mostly positive or negative. In 2019, we had 130 news stories that were published, which is an average of 10 stories a month. And then last year, we had 93 news stories that were published, which is an average of close to eight stories per month. Now, there is a decline from 2019 to 2020, but a lot of that has to do with the fact that the pandemic and also the presidential election really took center stage on the news. And so a lot of those events that typically would be covered where news, you know, our reporter would be here looking to cover something, they really were, you know, worried about what was happening nationally. Also with COVID, a lot of the events that we typically would have had inside of our buildings, we weren't allowed to have. And so those typically would have generated news coverage as well. All right, and then the last thing that we look at when improving and enhancing our external media outlets is social media. So social media is a major communication outlet for our district. If you don't believe me, ask Matt T. Sort. You stay up all hours of the night answering people who have questions about our district. So I see that you understand the importance of that. But we've made several improvements over the last year in order to improve our transparency, our credibility, our accessibility and also our trust. To do that, we did four things. One, we developed a social media policy. And this policy was to make sure that all of our staff members were on the same page, right? So we don't want to, we're trying to establish trust. We're also trying to work on some of the distrust and create opportunities where we're not causing mistrust from some of our stakeholders. So because of that, you know, all of our social media policy or all of our social media users follow our social media guidelines that we have in place to make sure that we're communicating a district-wide message and to also make sure that we're on the same page. With that, we also formalized our social media activity. You all will notice that we used and created templates online in our official school colors with our logo in order to announce official district information. That way, if that information is shared, stakeholders or any community members will know, like this is an official message that actually comes from the district. And that I believe that helps establish trust because it's an official message. They all look the same. But it also speaks to professionalism on social media, which is something that we had received feedback on before in the past. The third thing we did was refine our messaging. We really made changes to the types of information that was shared on our social media feed. Our Facebook page no longer shares things like play practice or soccer practices. But instead it's used more of a marketing or as a marketing and branding tool and as a way to connect our stakeholders to key information, which really makes people want to join your page. So instead of just liking it and then coming back and saying like, or following and then deciding they don't want to like it or unfollowing because you're sharing things that they don't really care about. It became an essential tool for people to find out very important information, which has allowed overall our Facebook followers to grow in the course of a year from 2,833 followers to 4,798, which is a 37% growth in a year's period. And by the beginning of February, it's looking as if it will be 5,000, so just based on the trend. All right, so when looking at internal communication, there were two things that we wanted to do. First, we wanted to create a system of communication. And then second, we wanted to create a consistent method of communication. While we consider external communication to be important, we really value and understand the importance of keeping our staff informed. Because our staff is the heartbeat of our organization, right? We can't do anything without our staff. We wouldn't try to. And so, you know, this method really directly addressed the mistrust that some of our staff may have had around being informed and being made aware about district decisions that were made in the past. On looking at a system of communication, our goal was to establish a system for how and when we release information and in what order, right? And so what we were finding in the past was that any initiative that we were pushing out from a district level, we just kind of released the information out. And, you know, we released it to staff, we released it to parents, and we did it all at one time because the decision had been made. And we really started thinking through how doing it that way may have caused a lot of distrust between our staff internally. One, we want to really give our building administrators an opportunity to think through the process, right? Think through district initiatives. So now when we release district information, we first release it to our principals. It gives them an opportunity to put a plan in place for their staff and to anticipate any questions that they may have from the people within their building. From there, we release that information to the staff. And that gives the staff an opportunity to ask any questions and to even share concerns. Many times, some of our buildings have specific needs. So when we release, you know, certain things out, one building may say, well, that works for everyone else, but this is creating a problem for this particular group of staff members. And that gives us time to go back to the drawing board. Gives us time to say, you know what, let's make some changes there so that we can make sure that it's okay for everyone. And then from there, after we release it to the staff, we release it to the community. Now, I know that sounds like a consistent, like a large amount of time. And I don't want it to come off as if we are withholding information for long periods of time, but to just give you an understanding of what that looks like. It's oftentimes within hours, sometimes within days. So we may release it to our building administrators on Monday. And then Tuesday, release it to our staff early in the morning. And then by Tuesday evening or afternoon at three o'clock or four o'clock, we release it out to our staff. I mean, out to our community, if that makes sense. I hope that gives you a better understanding of what that timeline looks like. Secondly, we created a consistent method of communication. One of the concerns we saw was that our staff was receiving an absorbent amount of emails throughout the week from AO that contained announcements, you know, up to date, up to, let's see, updates and other types of information that were considered to be need to know. But what we found is that it's really, staff doesn't really have a time to open 100 emails each day. And a lot of times, they weren't opening them and we weren't getting information to them. And so we were moving forward as if they had it and they didn't, right? They weren't aware. And so to address this concern, we created NWLSD News back in March, mainly because there was so much information that we were putting out regarding COVID-19. And so we wanted a one-stop shop where we could put all the information for staff to be able to go to and see for the week. So NWLSD News comes out every Monday morning. And it offers us an opportunity to kind of think through what we want to put inside of that communication. And then we release it out to staff with links and pictures and things like that. And then the last thing is really just establishing two-way communication, which is really important. You know, feedback is everything, right? You really need to know how your stakeholders feel about so many things. And this year, we've made some gains in this area. We recognize the fact that our stakeholders have a lot of information that they want to share. And honestly, we are listening and we are making decisions based on the feedback that we are receiving. We put out our first two-way survey, which was the 2020, 2021 school year calendar. And this is something that's really done every year. But it's a way to make sure that the staff is really happy about the school calendar that's planned for the next year. And it allows us to really hear their feedback about what is best for them, what type of professional learning and development days they think. what type of professional learning and development days they think they need, um, and how, you know, certain holidays um or breaks when they fall, um, how it's either beneficial or maybe even can be kind of frustrating because it doesn't give them enough time to prepare. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that we heard back from them. Um, we released a educational option for the start of the year in May, on the twenty-second, and that particular survey um was used to gain a better understanding of whether our families wanted a hybrid model or wanted to go full remote. And at that time, you know, that was in the, wasn't really early, we really hadn't received all the information that we needed to from the governor, but we did want to make sure that we were engaging um with our families to see when the governor does make a decision, what direction will you go and what will you choose. So that was a very helpful survey. Um, in June, we put out our school reopening survey, um, and in that survey, we um surveyed our staff as well as our families, and we used that as a way to um assess our staff's well-being at that time to see how they were feeling. Um, we asked them to describe the challenges that they were facing um working remotely. We asked them to identify how they were feeling emotionally, how comfortable they were with returning, um, what would make them feel more comfortable, and their communication needs and desires. And in our family survey, um, we put something out to them, just really following up the information that we had received from the last survey, um, asking parents if they would choose to use remote, uh, do remote learning or do in-person. Um, in September, we put out an internet accessibility survey. This allowed us um through a grant to be able to provide Wi-Fi to families who are in need, but it also gave us enough information to um understand that we needed to extend our our Wi-Fi out to the parking lots for some of the families to download information on the weekend or different things like that. Um, we did a second semester fee- feedback um on October the twenty-second, which I, you all know much about, um, and that was just looking at the second semester needs and expectations as we rolled into January. We put that stuff out to staff, families, and for the first time, we surveyed our students to get their feedback. And then lastly, we did a COVID nineteen vaccine um survey on January nineteenth, and that was to gain a better understanding of how our, how many staff anticipated taking um the actual vaccine when it came out. Um, we, you know, we recognize that this is a good start, honestly, um, and we think that there's a lot of growth that's come, a lot of unity that's been built since we've been putting these plans together to better communicate with all of our stakeholders. Um, but we also recognize that there are still lots of room to grow, um, and there are lots of other stakeholders that we need to be reaching out to, um, and so our next steps are really to identify those, to be honest. We really need some systems um in place to address our alumni, um, and to address other groups, but one, we want to be financially um and fiscally responsible with the money that we're using, and then two, because the communications department is kind of small at this time, um, we want to be able to make sure that when we um engage this group of people that we're ready for, um, and we're able to handle the the commentary and the feedback, um, and we're a- we're able and at a capacity to be able to move forward with the responses that we receive. So they are on um the, you know, the radar, and as we move forward, we will begin addressing them. Are there any questions?
I need to clicker, if you don't mind.
I need to ask you a question. Have you read the uh communication audit?
Yes.
Did you take some of the items out of the communication audit and incorporate it with your present, or what we're doing right now with your presentation?
Of course. I mean, honestly, I think that there was a lot of um feedback that we got, um, and so we've, we've implemented numerous things that were inside of that um that audit. That was a very um, a very thick book that was received, and so we can't do everything at at one time. I think we have to be um strategic on how we move forward and do it in baby steps, but and to make sure that whatever we launch out to do, that it's sustainable, um, because, you know, starting new things, um, starting new ways of communication and letting it fail also builds mistrust too. And so in everything that we do, we have to, you know, continue to be consistent and continue to be reliable in everything that we put out.
All right, my second question is, is, in reality, how would you grade the district as far as the trust factor?
You know, that's difficult, um, to actually put a number on it, and I don't know that I I can.
I mean, if you had to grade it A, B, C, D?
I think that it's a work in progress. Um, Rome was not built in a day, and so it's difficult to be able to to, you know, be here for a year and a half to say it's, it's at this grade level, it's improved drastically. Um, and so I think we have to continue to to move that, um, the work that's being done forward. I do think, um, there's a a quote out there that says, never waste a good crisis, and I will say that everything that took place with this, with the pandemic, has really brought a lot of unity amongst our staff, um, our district-level staff, um, all the way down to our working staff and even our community, they've huddled around us. I think that they see that we're working hard. I think that they respect the fact that we're listening to them and making decisions, and it's not perfect. That's no way, we're not saying that it's perfect in any way, um, but we're listening, and I do think that trust is being built each and every day.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Liz, a couple of things. Um, I think your opening statement was right on the money. If if this pillar is not kind of, I'll say, on the front burner, all the other pillars will collapse. You're not gonna, you're not gonna go to a bunch of educators who who don't trust the administrative office and their initiatives and tell them that, hey, this, these are the things that we're gonna do academically and from an achievement perspective, they're just not gonna buy into it because they don't trust the direction. And so I think, uh, you know, kind of alluding to what Joe's saying, there's, there's some history here that has to be overcome. Um, and and trust comes from the top down, starting with the board down, and if, and if that has to be, that has to be fixed, and I guess the, the other thing that you you brought up is, I think it does take a thousand positive experiences, and you can absolutely blow trust out with one bad experience. Uh, and that, that's unfair, because I, I think, uh, you know, I've been on the board for three years now, and everybody will complain about everything, but there's these miraculous things that happen in our school history that we don't hear of. And and there's far more miraculous things than negative things, and we just, they're never, and I'm not saying that toward you or your department, I'm just saying, I think society in general, just historically, they like to complain versus, you know, the reason I'm on the board is, this school has impacted my children. We need to hear that, and and I think everybody's gonna have to put their defenses down, uh, they're gonna have to let some of the history go. I mean, if it's truly about the children, which is, you know, the, the kind of the string in everybody's neck, they pull and say, oh, it's about the kids. Is it really about the kids? Because if it is, then some of these ongoing battles and fights that go on, which is very typical in any organization, I mean, it's, it's inherent human behavior. But if it's truly about the kids, we'll set some of these things down and and start moving forward and letting water under the bridge, history be whatever it is. Um, but I, I think what you're doing with this is outstanding, and I appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you so much. I want to end um with another thing that we believe kind of helps move our culture of trust forward. Um, in the back of our strategic plan, we have our commitment, um, and so in that, I'm gonna just read it. It says, N W L S D is going beyond, and it says, your commitment, and it's I, it's an I, and you insert your name there, and it says, commit to move forward, to do my best, to give my best, to swing the pendulum, to change the narrative, to shoot for the moon, to do better than yesterday, to look ahead, to always do what's right and what's best for all. I commit to go beyond together to ensure student achievement, social, emotional development, diversity and equity, financial stability and trust, and are encouraged and established in order to create a community and school district that is committed to make, making N W L S D's mission, vision and beliefs a reality. And so we gave that to each one of our staff members for them to sign in order for them to really buy into um this work that we're doing. Um, you're right in so many ways, Mark. Like, we, we have not gotten it right in a lot of ways, right? And we have to, as a district, own that, um, but this is our effort to, you know, create a system in order to um create a school district that our stakeholders are proud to be a part of. And so these are the beginning steps, and so, um, you know, we're glad to have all of our stakeholders take part in this with us as we move it forward.
I, I will speak on behalf of the board one time. We're behind you, and we support you a hundred percent, whatever that is, no matter how hard the battle is, we're, we're behind you.
I love to hear that. And now we'll have Todd come back and give the rest of the information concerning.
Yeah, because we're nowhere near done.
Really?
I was trying to get going here.
We're getting more for our dollars.
Yeah, you are. So to continue facilitating what she was saying, um, the communication audit is a big part of what her charge was, and that was data collected in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. Um, I think if you look what's happened now in two thousand twenty-one, a lot of positive things have happened, and if you look at the last pass of our levy, we have had community support and gone in the right direction. But I want to go back to the objectives of the culture of trust, and I will know where be as long as Lindsey was, because she did a great job and covered a lot of what I'm gonna cover, but um identify and implement opportunities for stakeholders to be heard. So I think it goes back to her communication piece. We were told we are doing communication, but we're not giving away for feedback to happen. That was a problem. We're communicating at people, but we're not listening or providing a way for them to feed back. So when we had our focus group with H C E S C, which was Bill Sears and Brad Lovell, um, we heard from our stakeholders and our committees that we needed to be more transparent. In other words, don't just tell us what you're doing, how are you going to listen to us and take our feedback and tell us what you're doing in advance so we can give you our insight on what we'd like to see? So it goes back to hopefully everything you heard tonight. Chris McKee talking about, we've already started facilities committee, we've already in input that says, we'd like to look at combining or consolidating some of the district. Some of the things we're doing with academics, teachers wanted P D to change, so student achievement changed some to P D. So hopefully, you're starting to see some of those things come together that we've tried to accomplish there. Um, we had set aside our principals meeting and and trying to do some different things there, our surveys. All five of those surveys were developed specifically that she went over to gather feedback back. We could have just said, the governor said, we can open school wherever we want, we could have just said, this is how we're doing. We didn't want to do that. We wanted people to have choice, and to this day, it's still a hard decision. Most of the questions that you guys put tonight is, well, is there any chance we'll go back to changing bells and that? Well, on a daily basis, Jack, Joe and I still get questions of, can we do remote next year because we don't want to go back to in-person? We still don't know that answer, but we'll talk to our community before we make that decision. So all of those things are gonna be important pieces. The portrait of a graduate, there's not a separate place on that tonight, but hopefully through our presentations, you've heard that what are the competencies? It's not a high school thing. What are the competencies we need at each grade level for our kids to be successful? I don't think high school will ever be the same again. I think it'll be a combination. If you look at what Butler Tech is doing right now, if people aren't aware, on Fridays they take off and they have co-op where the kids do internships. Well, our high school is looking at something similar to provide an opportunity for our kids possibly next year. They've also implemented the Wednesdays this year, so that internship and seeing what possibilities those kids can do, but it's through a Zoom bell schedule. So we'll see how that goes and see what happens, but um we've tried doing a monthly Supercast, Super Chat podcast. Board meetings are now Facebook Live. We've never had that. You have more viewership now than you ever did. Think about the parents who couldn't get here on a Monday night at six o'clock, because baseball, softball, track, boy scout meetings. That's changed the way we do things forever. Um, so all of those things are a different way of communicating and being transparent. The other objective was provide training and resources to cultivate healthy relationships. So what we've tried to do is work on our, our administrative office and our principal supervisor leadership meetings. So we've taken our, our supervisor and principal meetings and changed it to, what do they want it to become? How do we build you into better leaders? How do we give you the tools necessary to lead through a pandemic, to lead through when we get back to normal? What would you like to see be part of what gives you the skills necessary to be a great leader? And so we're getting away from the, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, you gotta do that, to allowing them to provide input on what leadership is, to allow them to lead each other, to allow them to collaborate, to allow them to model techniques for each other, and then us modeling techniques for them that they can take back to their staffs and provide. Um, the key there is, they've got to start listening to their staff also, so they go back to their B L Ts. They've got a sounding board. Our sounding board has become our supervisors, so that's food service, maintenance, transportation, um, custodial. Um, for our principals, it's uh their B L Ts, it's their building leadership team. So they've, they've got building teachers who are part of their building leadership team, that's their sounding board. So how do they listen to them and then facilitate things in their building and collaborate with them? So we're trying to work on that piece so that there's ownership for everything that's incorporated into the district, but it doesn't mean they're gonna make every decision. Sooner or later, it comes down to some of the things Joe was saying. We've got to make decisions that are best for kids, and not everybody's gonna agree with that, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with that, but at least we've listened, we've been transparent, and we've gathered their input, but again, it comes down to what's best for kids. Um, we've done Zoom meetings for the grade levels. We've met with individual buildings, provided a chance for every staff member on that school to sit down and express to us what they're concerned about, what they're worried about. We've met with grade levels, K through five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. We've provided opportunity after opportunity for them to meet with us. We've met with the union. What's not working? What is working? What are you hearing? How do we help you? So we've tried to do everything we can, and it goes back to what Lindsey's saying, be transparent, be available, but also listen, take our feedback and make adjustments as you go. Uh, a prime example is, we met with the union, some of the caseloads at the middle school were getting hot. They had too many people on the roster. So we were able to take our S of funds, which is the extra money the government gave us, put two extra middle school teachers in there that did not come from the general fund. We even had this discussion at a board meeting, but it, because we had so many kids on remote, it allowed us to lessen the caseload so we didn't have one teacher teaching a hundred and eighty remote kids, which is not possible. So little things like that, we were able to talk to them and do. And then lastly, we have our super circle, and that's, that was outstanding for Amy and I. It was an opportunity for us to go out to each school building. We scheduled it at a different school each month. Um, some of it was prior to the levy, some of it was during the levy, some of it was after the levy, and it's just an app, opportunity to talk to our folks. I remember Ed Choice. We had Ed Choice conversations where some parents would come up, hey, what is this, Ed Choice? My kid's in your elementary schools right now, uh, why should I think about taking this money and taking them out of our schools? And so you just have that opportunity to engage your community members, and by the time they got done talking to us, a- and we found out as much from them as they found out as much from us how to get the money. They told us about all the great things that were going on in our school, and they talked themselves out of taking Ed Choice funds. But it also lit a fire under myself to start promoting our district and fighting for things that we need to get in contact with Bill Blessing and other legislators, because we need our kids to stay in our district, and and that's why we fight our fight. But it gives Amy a chance several times, we have one guy that always shows up to every meeting to talk about financial stability, and he had great ideas for Amy to talk about how we can better structure things that we're doing and what word we need to get out to our community. So it was engaging, um, it allowed us to talk about what's going on in our district, and it's, it's just a chance to sit down with five or six, seven people, like have a coffee or tea, and and just talk about what's going on. And it seemed to be different people at each school, and we look forward to getting back to that. Um, we got to the point where COVID hit, and we couldn't do that anymore, so Lindsey and I started sending out videos and we released those, and we'll get back to hopefully going out again and spacing in these big cafeterias again and getting the message out. But I think the culture of trust has to get back to relationships, and the only way to develop relationships is over time, and it's following through with what you say you're gonna do. If we stop tomorrow with the surveys and we go back to the way things used to be and we're just, this is what we're doing, and we don't ask input, and we don't do things that we don't follow through, then we get back to a, a place we don't want to be. So I think the pillars tonight explains where we are. In August, I look forward to a state of the district, like a state of the union, to tell where we are and how our pillars are going, describe how things are. We're not gonna have a report card again this year because of COVID. Testing is still up in the air. Right now, we're gonna have some of the tests, we're not gonna have all the state tests. With a new president, we don't know what's gonna happen there also, but in August, we'll be able to give another update. We want to do that annually, and we want to do this in January to give you an update on where we are with our strategic plan. I am so excited about the portrait of a graduate. I think it's gonna lead to great things for our district. Um, we had ninety-two participants, we think we'll have over a hundred at our next one. Um, and our next meeting is February eleventh at six o'clock, so I hope you guys got a lot out of this. We wanted to put everything in front of you, put the information out in you. You are the most important folks in our district. You vote on policies that affect our kids, and you can't vote on policy to support our pillars unless you know what they are, so that's why we did this work session. So very appreciative of your support, and if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
I thought the.
We might have covered it all.
Was outstanding.
Very good, very informative.
It was a lot. We're, we're coming up on a, you know, we stretch this out another four minutes, that would be three hours. Yeah, I apologize.
I thought the presentation was outstanding.
Very good, very informative.
It was a lot. We're coming up on, you know, we stretch this out another four minutes, that'll be three hours.
Yeah, I apologize for the time, but they were impassioned about what they were talking about.
I do kind of have a comment, how you were talking about how, you know, we got people watching on Facebook Live right now. We also are on WACross Live at the moment. And it's being recorded from YouTube. But another benefit also to the Facebook Live is not only do people, you know, watch it on Facebook right now and interact with each other. And, but, you know, come, you know, 9 o'clock, 9:30, you know, parent puts the kids to bed, they can turn and start the Facebook Live and watch it over instead of having to wait for it to drop on YouTube. A lot more opportunities for people to watch this meeting or any of our meetings.
We are so transparent now. It's unbelievable.
I just want to say a couple of things here. I want to thank all the presenters tonight. I think they did one heck of a nice job being exact. And the problem with this whole situation is, this is a pretty steep mountain we got to climb to get what the results that we want, especially for the people in the district and the students. So I hope they stay on it.
Is that it?
Yep.
Talk anything else?
That's it. Appreciate you guys coming.
Thanks.
Did it log anybody else out? I'm still on.
I'm still logged in.
It kicked me out too.
Fight logs you out for inactivity. Okay. Alright, need a motion to adjourn?
Someone. Chris, it's not letting me vote. It's not letting me vote.
Try a sink, Pam.
I, I keep hitting it.
Well, verbally vote. Yeah, can she give a verbal?
Yeah, just log, yeah. I think that's what I.
Can you log out, log back in, Pam, real quick?
Alright. Give me a second.
Like, who's sitting next to this fool?
There you go.
There it is. Thanks, Pam.
Take care of yourself, Pam.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye.